We have some announcements. The Community Preservation Committee is holding their annual public hearing. It's Wednesday on January fifteenth, starting at six P M. That's an opportunity for the residents in town to say how they would like the community preservation funds that we spent. So please join us. Merrimack Valley Housing Summit is going to be Tuesday, January fourteenth, around eight thirty to eleven A M. At Northern Essex Community College. This is being hosted by N B P C, right?
Yeah, they sent out the invite, yeah.
And then also call the volunteers. Right now, we have openings on the Capitol Improvements Committee, just an important committee. There's two openings on that heading into town meeting. Be great to fill those spots. There's also several other committees that have openings and you can find those on the town website under the volunteer tab. Regular business item A is public comment. Does anybody here wish to make a public comment? Bond B, town manager updates.
I think first one is Middle Street Bridge and I think everything in there is information that was known to you. But, you know, we put together a fairly complete update for the website last Friday. So I just wanted to include that with the board. We have been in touch with the resident engineer this week as well as the construction contractor has been in touch with the S E to get the all of the engineering drawings in cap format. So they kind of signed a light, some kind of agreement on that. So anyhow, things are moving forward. We do expect to have a project coordination meeting in January. Once everyone's fully prepared, we'll have the actual pre-construction meeting, including the contractor. The project coordination meeting will be initially just between the town, the city, the design engineer and the resident engineer. So that's very exciting.
Yeah, this is a great post summarizing the history and yeah.
Thanks. Next item, also particularly aware of this, the court did accept the adverse possession settlement with the says easement on the agenda that shouldn't, it was actually change in property line. So the attorneys have been in correspondence with the surveyors just in the last day or two to get the Mylar. It needed certain language for recording that I guess was not on the Mylar. So there was some correspondence on that the last couple of days. And I believe that's likely to be recorded tomorrow. So once that's officially on record, the only next step to resolve that is going to be to get the assessing records and the mapping updated and then to move forward with the removal of items off the town portion of the land.
And the management plan, that's all, everything's done as far as?
No, we're actually, we're, yeah, we need to, the signage is still temporary signage. So we need to do the final sign. So it's, it's, the state's accepted the management plan back in June. So they're not waiting on anything. But yes, that's, that signage is going to need to be updated to reflect the revised property lines. So that, and then we would have that fabricated as permanent signage rather than the paper laminated sign that we have up there now.
What's, first one, remember, was the state money already, already received? Or was this a reimbursable?
It was a reimbursement grant and everything that was due to them needed to be provided by June thirtieth. And they did allow, they did accept everything, even knowing that this needed to be formally resolved. We did, they did reimburse at the, at the rate that we had expected. So, thanks.
Can I go back and just make a comment on one item, on the Merrimack Valley Housing Summit thing?
Yeah.
Just thought it was curious and interesting, one of the presenters is Judy Barry. So, and she's the one back in nineteen ninety nine, your work for John Connery, that master plan. She's brilliant and I'm trying to get to just to see her again.
Oh, great.
She's great. I actually saw her at that planning conference I went to in Springfield a month or so ago. And I talked with her and let her know that assuming that, you know, funding gets proposed and approved next spring, I told her we'd definitely be in touch in terms of, you know, would want to consider her firm.
Hopefully can afford her.
Yeah, she, she's absolutely one of the best in the business, if not.
She was so non, she didn't just follow the fill in the blanks like the others.
Oh, yeah.
She was just, she really was thoughtful with the whole process.
She's excellent and as you may or may not know, she broke out on her own. Must have been eight or ten years ago now, but she's, she's got her own firm and.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Not at all, not at all. Yes, aggregation plan, we didn't include materials in the packet because that's going to be on substantively for, for your, I think for the next meeting, Rick, is that for the ninth or the twenty third?
So it was actually discussed at last night, the S E meeting. So the S E, you know, does have a recommendation.
Yeah.
And that should be available for, for our next meeting.
Yeah, you say a recommendation, one of the providers has been?
Well, not just providers, but which, so there were, I think, eight different proposals in terms of mixes of, you know, different, different types of supply. And then for each of those eight, there were six different timeframes, you know, ranging from six months to three years and six months.
So you got a hand to conclude, yeah?
So, yeah, so, you know, so there's, you know, so we have a recommendation as to the, what we think is the best way to go. And then we've got.
That doesn't mean looking at that.
So will you write something up for, could be in the packet or someone on the committee?
Yeah, I'll talk to Jim about that, however, you know, however one.
Be good to have it written, you know, even if he's here for you, just so.
Sure, yeah, okay.
So that's the moves forward. Route one thirteen, I, I think I put a memo in the packet. A lot is moving forward, building on the covered meeting in, in November. And we've got a really good meeting earlier this week with T E C. So they'll be putting together a written report to tie everything together. And once we receive that, that'll be on a board agenda probably. We're aiming for January twenty third for that. And the board will be asked to accept that as the final word product for the corridor study as well as to authorize one or more project need forms. Those are at this point expected to be one for improvements of crossings and a second for filling gaps in sidewalk. So there'll be a lot more detail, but in a nutshell, that's how they'll be broken out. We wondered if including that many crossings with potential upgrades like the rapid flasher beacons might be too much for a single project need form. But T E C's advice was, would be to package them kind of like would like for the whole corridor because it's all in the context of a comprehensive corridor study. And E O T can always come back and say, you know, we'd like to carve off three or four and not do them all at once. But his recommendation was to submit those all as a single project.
So they would carve it off rather than not it? I mean, it would be that kind of interaction?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We also talked about, you know, the process of, you know, our objective is, to this point, we've been putting, you know, significant local effort toward this. And most of the funding that's gone toward it has been state earmark funding. So it's not, there have been some town meeting articles, but most of the funding has been state earmarks. But it's still locally administered and where it is a state highway. Kevin Dandray is, is part of the submittal to the P O T is going to be to say, you know, it is your road. And, and there's a point at which we would look for you to pick up the design permanent because that really should be their responsibility on a state road. I think it's excellent what we've been doing. We knew we needed to prime the pump just to get some attention and to try to get a project that's ready for, you know, shovel ready, which we have with the page pipe save. But that's going to be part of the anticipated ask to the state is to get them to start putting some design effort toward the corridor, which, you know, really hadn't got up until the last couple of years, had not gotten much attention formally. So that's going well. And let's see, the cable license franchise agreements. We've had, I think, a very substantive call last week with the attorney with K P. He specializes in that, he's very knowledgeable, he'll have to page you the notes. Of course, he's retiring at the end of the calendar year. But, but he, he has a colleague who I've also worked with on different, different matters, who's also good. So will be in good hands. And he was going to, Bill Hewitt was going to speak with Verizon and let them know they could expect to hear from us. It was funny, some of the, you know, some of his description of those letters that we get. He, you know, he said that the state sends those with this like sense of urgency. But he's, he's, he described as a formal ascertainment process and an informal ascertainment process. And the formal one.
He said no one has done in the entire history of.
Yeah.
Oh, you're kidding?
Yeah.
I think it sounds like it's so urgent.
It involves depositions, it involves interrogatories, discovery. He said it's effectively like treated like litigation.
Yeah.
No one ever does that. They do the informal, which is what we did the last time where you reach out to them, you sit at the table, you bargain, you work it out. It's exactly what it sounds, it's a more informal process. So, but, but the state Department of Telecom is, is still sends these letters about this formal ascertainment process, which, you know, we didn't really know the distinction. He said that's, that's just, he said they get calls all the time from communities and they're like, what's going to happen if we don't do it? Nothing's going to happen. So it was good. I feel like we're going to be in good hands there. And I think not for tonight because it's just on for an update. But at some meeting in the not too distant future, I would look to the board to set a direction on who you'd like to represent the town in that process. And to the extent legal counsel is involved, that would be payable from the peg funds.
So did they, sorry, I just wanted, did he say anything about maybe a dual process with Comcast? Do you know, we're not ready?
We talked about that. He said we can contact Comcast, but his advice was they're not going to pay any attention to us because that, our, our agreement with that goes through the end of December twenty twenty six. So since we're, we're so far out. And he actually said ideally Comcast would go first because in his experience Verizon will match whatever terms. If you have multiple cable providers, he said Verizon will match the terms of whomever else. So if we're able to get Comcast to go to, for instance, a higher percentage of the peg fees and his experience Verizon would match that, they will not go beyond that. So he said, you know.
And Comcast will not do that?
No, he, he didn't really say anything about Comcast. We were primarily focused on Verizon.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but he said, you know, it would work out probably better for us if Comcast was first. But they're not first. That was not, it doesn't expire for over two years or just over two years from now.
Is there any option to extend the Verizon contract for just a year so that we're doing these at the same time?
I think that's a great thing to talk about. Yeah, it would seem there ought to be. I can tell you from the process back in twenty nineteen or so, they, they didn't seem to have any eagerness. This seems to be a chore for them, that I don't think they look forward to these, you know.
Wasn't there some comment last time around, was there, didn't somebody from Verizon wonder aloud why they were actually here?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
That's not great.
Well, you know, there's a lot of changes in the industry, obviously, we're standing, you know, so. But it was, it definitely, it was good. And then the other part of that is, is we'll be looking to really be, we're going to need to clearly articulate what our revenue needs are going to be. So I got the, the data from the last five years that I put in the packet is pretty interesting because it clearly shows the revenues have exceeded the, the use. So I think if there is going to be an interest in requesting more money, you know, we're going to need to have a, some idea of why we would need that, you know, because historically we haven't needed.
You're hitting on my questions right there. I mean, the money they give us, it's gone down dramatically.
Yes.
But the account fund is still building, forty million dollars.
Yeah, right.
And as far as, I know we got a couple of cameras in this building.
Right, we, we replaced the server and, but most of those monies go to pay for the cost to get these, these meetings broadcast. And, and there haven't been, you know, and then there's some speakers that the Cable Advisory Committee provides some support, you know, modest items for.
It'd be a request of residents, if there's anything along the lines of, we could have them looking into. And you also did talk about who gets to decide on the funds, right?
Yeah, he said it is unambiguous that that is, it is the select board. Those funds are absolutely under the select board's oversight unless the select board specifically delegates that authority.
Which we have not.
I haven't looked back into the whole file, so I know it was ten years ago.
That would be a time to vote, right?
No, 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 it would be, yeah.
I would be surprised if the prior chair was on both, that, that that wouldn't have been formally afforded to them.
Well, but we also didn't have, you know, we had in-house counsel, which was not, didn't probably maybe have the expertise that, I mean, this, Bill Hewitt, this is what he does. So he, he had it like cold, he had all the facts like exactly, you know, whereas, I mean, not to, you know, prevent a short of what happened in the past, but when you have a single in-house counsel who's governing every issue, they, you know.
And who can't focus on.
Yeah, okay, so I just don't know if they voted that or not. So we have treated it in practice and, you know, until the board tells us otherwise, we would continue to, you know, look to the Cable Advisory Committee Chair to approve the expenses. But, but he did recommend that if that's not been formalized, that that should be formalized. And clear, made, just made clear to everybody because I think to the extent there's routine recurring expenses, that's worked well. But to the, you know, let's say a purchase order came in for, for some major use of those funds. You know, obviously Jenny and I would flag that, but, but it's probably worth clarifying to all parties that that's ultimately up to this door.
So their next meeting is the, is the ninth? I don't know.
Oh, it is, yeah, okay, all right.
So, I mean, I know they did send us a letter of what they were looking for in contract negotiations. But I think it might be good to do some kind of financial planning, like, you know, looking ahead, what's revenue so they can deal with me.
I mean, the negotiation, that's all, that's generally what it's about, right, is how much they kick back.
Yeah.
There's not a whole lot else there.
Well, they, they were looking for equipment as well that they feel like was promised by Verizon and not delivering, you know.
And then the last thing, and then you had, you know, designated Jim probably to negotiate for us. So it's not as a bad tonight?
It's not as an action item. I, I think, you know, it's the first update we've had on this for a little while. So it's more just to get everyone back in the mindset, but that would be my recommendation.
More at the time, I'll put that.
Okay, yeah, no, I think it'd be great, you know, he's, it's, it's a natural with, you know.
Give us something to do, keep my tone up.
Next item, these were both surprises to us. I showed Jim to, had tracked these down when the, when the budget was approved. He did a search for West Newbury, found there were a couple of earmarks in there. And so we, we've initiated the process and I actually did get a response back from the, from the state today with a point of contact. And just like all the other earmarks we dealt with, that's treated like a grant. So there's a grant agreement put in place between us and the Commonwealth. And sometimes that involves, sometimes they look at for a specific scope. It depends, we'll see what they need, but.
When you said it was a surprise, I thought there, that you had mentioned.
Yeah. Yeah, she, she had, her staff person had reached out last spring and said that she was going to seek an earmark.
Yeah. So yeah, it wasn't. We never got, we never got qual, we never notified that it had actually happened.
Correct, and in fact, I had contacted her office in the summer and even actually in the fall as we were doing the, as we were running the numbers on ARPA and, you know, the construction contract. I had been in touch this recently, it was, I think, September. And it hadn't, it hadn't been approved yet, the number wasn't known. So we, we knew that had been soft, but we didn't know until recently.
Was, was the timing of Jim's looking into it based on the state budget, budget government? No, it was actually the economic development bill that was passed recently. We had some earmarks in that as well. And so I just, by happenstance, went and looked for the budget as well.
Yeah.
And it actually wasn't even in the Senate budget.
Yeah.
So it was only in the House budget, so it got kept in on negotiations, which was surprising because it was not a large amount, so.
So how will this work with the ARPA money for the Middle Street Bridge? Will this get subtracted from that?
We would use all non-local funds first. And so, yeah, that could have, you know, reduced what's expended from our budget because of how you voted the fire truck. It would, it would still go back. But yeah, if we end up getting a contract in place, which I think we will, you know, people, you know, and that becomes actual real money, then that would be one of the first accounts we would have is the, the state money. And interestingly, this is, I didn't mention this in here, but there wasn't an earmark for, to the benefit of West Newbury in the economic development bill, but it was in the, it was a borrowing authorization. So it's not real money, it's potential money.
Until the governor does something.
But it referred to five hundred thousand dollars to similar economic development efforts in West Newbury. I don't know where that came from.
And a hundred thousand for, actually, the crossing.
But that's.
Hundred thousand borrowing or?
But yeah, this is, so I, I talked to this Mass Office of Rural Affairs a week or two after I had seen this. And, because it was part of one of the, you know, weekly check-ins that, that we have with them. And I asked about that and they said, yeah, it's, it's authorized, it doesn't mean it's real. So it's something to keep an eye on, for sure.
When you said you used the word borrowing, the state would borrow that, yeah, so it would be part of the state fund. So they're borrowing up to, yeah, they sold them out or they could borrow half.
Five hundred thousand for.
Yeah.
Well, it was actually every community of blue stars got a hundred thousand.
Really?
Oh, okay. Or might get.
Or might get. Or may not, yeah. Be realistic.
It was read into the bill. Question of whether it gets funded, but.
Well, that's interesting, I'm going to start thinking about what.
Right, right, exactly, what, what, what you said, what?
Don't let's get it sponsored.
So other than that, just, you know, briefly, yeah, the stormwater, we, we're meeting with the consultant, we're continuing to work on the viola and regs. I included in here the budget schedule, I know you've seen it, but just so you have the final, final one that's been sent around to the department. And then I included Paul's memo on the septic. I had been talking to him in the process of putting together the capital program updates this summer and fall because we had had the, you know, septic system penciled in for a future year. So I asked him, how, how do I know, is that like a two or three year thing or a five year thing? And his recommendation was to get the testing. So he's been working with Public Works to get it done. And so once we have results that we tell the settlement, give us a good idea of what the, you know, timeframe is before that, you know, either or both of those systems might need major investments.
So that's kind of a timely thing with the, with the school.
Very much so, yeah, yeah. So I think that's, that's all I had for updates.
Fine, did you want to talk about the project status under updates or is that just our information?
I think, you know, just, just for your information, if you have questions, that's, that's fine. But otherwise, just, you could, you know, give me a call or stop by, we can talk over anything, but.
Great. You're saying project status.
I sent out this afternoon with the kind of the matrix of all the projects and the color coding. It just went out this afternoon, so I would expect it to be there.
So maybe we can discuss that on the ninth?
Yeah. Yep, yeah, we'll, we'll put that out for the ninth, that, that'd be great.
All right, so the next item, Department Updates and Discussion. We have Katrina Larry, our town planner here to give us a presentation on shared streets and complete streets.
Yes, you ready for me?
We are.
All right, great. And, and I am able to share?
Actually, I'm going to pull up this, I've got the slides right here. So I will do a share so you can see and everybody on Zoom can see what the board is seeing.
Okay, and I'll just ask you to, to look it.
That coming through?
All right, yep, I can see it. Okay, so Angus asked me to put together a presentation on the Complete Streets Program. Since then, he asked me to add on the Shared Streets Program. They're both MAST D O T programs and I have familiarity in Middleton with both of them. In Middleton, we actually adopted a complete street policy back in two thousand fourteen, which I didn't realize was the first year that MAST D O T had started the program. And we were able to do a couple of projects, a half a mile sidewalk on Boston Street and a new intersection with an R R F B or rectangular rapid flashing beacon for our rail trail crossing. So it, it did help Middleton a lot. And, and I guess we're here tonight to talk about whether or not we have the bandwidth to pursue grants such as the Complete Streets Program and Shared Streets Program.
Can I, can I ask a question? Or I was unaware of the Shared Streets Program, I hadn't heard it before. So are the programs complementary or are they mutually exclusive or, you know?
They're, they're, they're separate, totally separate programs.
I think it's, is it shared spaces?
It's, it's shared streets in spaces.
Shared streets in spaces, yeah.
Okay.
So including like plazas or landscape areas.
But you can participate, a community can participate?
Yeah, and this, Katrina will get into, into this in some detail, but there's definitely distinctions between the two. For instance, the complete streets, you can't use for work on a state highway. The shares, shared spaces, you can. There's different eligibility for use of design funds, so on and so forth. So it's funny because I had actually seen something come through my listserv on the shared spaces. I sent, sent it to Katrina, so it's, and it turned, I didn't make the immediate connection. They're two totally different programs, so. So I invited her to present, basically to help, we, we've heard these terms, but we've never really had this squarely on the table to really look at. So I thought where she had significant experience in a most recent community, it'd be good to get a deeper dive. It's not on tonight for you to make a decision, but I thought we were all benefit from having some more detail back.
Okay, thanks, sorry to cut you off, Katrina.
So you can go to the next slide. And some of you may recognize this picture in the background. I think that's, isn't that Maple Street on the right? Or you could correct me, I see the church.
Yeah, that's the intersect, yeah, because that's that St. Anne's Church, yeah, right.
Right. So, so this is something that, you know, was brought to my attention when we joined the Complete Streets Program back in two thousand fourteen. It's something that changes over the last century that you're not aware of until you realize, hey, what happened to the room on the street for pedestrians and bicycles? Back in this, in the, when this picture was taken, everyone shared the road. There were, there were no cars or I don't think there were cars yet. I don't really know what year it is. And then over the years, the pressure's been on to make our roads faster and wider and, you know, add more lanes, all for moving vehicles. And we've kind of forgotten about other modes of transportation. And it's actually pretty unhealthy too, that we only depend upon our cars. So we would like to encourage people to get back on the roads, walking, biking, et cetera. So the, the state was the first, one of the first in the nation to adopt a complete streets program. And they, and what they're trying to do is encourage people to think about different modes of transportation. The roads aren't just for vehicles, which is, which I think is a really good idea. So next slide. The overall definition of complete streets is one that provides safe and accessible options for all travel modes, walking, biking, transit and vehicles for people of all ages and abilities. So you'll see a lot of A D A compliance too in, in this program. So next slide. So when I was putting this, this slideshow together, I'm thinking, well, is there even a need in West Newbury for increasing safety of pedestrian and bicycles? And it, it does show that you've had at least two over the last ten years, two pedestrian accidents that were, that were defined as serious. So there, there is a need, at least on one thirteen, I would think, to increase the safety for pedestrians and bicycles. Next slide. Okay, so the goal of MAST D O T here is. Okay, so the goal of Mast D O T here is first to provide incentives to adopt the policy. So first, the, a town would have to a- adopt a complete streets policy, and I can get into that later on. Um, the next step is you go to tier two, which I'll talk about later too. They provide money so you can hire an engineer to put together a prioritization plan. And that plan will list all of the improvements the town thinks it needs. Um, I'm sure we'll probably have a list of these improvements, um, uh, after the one thirteen study is done, but yes, this, we can't use that money on state roads, so, uh, forget that, but we can still add those to our prioritization list. Um, and then every four years, a town can apply for up to five hundred thousand dollars, so in year one, if they applied for two hundred thousand, they still have three, three hundred thousand left to spend in that four-year period. Next slide, please. So this program, um, there is a lot of work involved in this program. It is a large grant, however, um, it starts with tier one, which I, I mentioned, you register with Mast D O T. You participate in a training, I've already done the training, and so we, we've already checked that off. Um, you develop a complete streets policy, I already actually have a draft policy for the town that, you know, we can view and add to if we decide to pursue this program. Um, after you submit your policy and it's accepted by the state, um, you go to tier two. And that, that means that you can apply for the thirty-eight thousand dollars in funds to hire an engineer to do a prioritization plan for the town. That results in a list, um, with descriptions of every single project. It makes it very easy when you get to tier three to then apply for funds for that project because you've already done all the background work on that project. Next slide, please. So what are the types of projects we could apply for? Sidewalks, repairs, ADA ramps, um, traffic calming, those are chicanes, they're, uh, speed bumps, shoulder widening, radar speed signs, um, I already mentioned the R R F B, the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, which, um, can be automatic for crosswalks, or you can have, you know, a button that you can press to make it flash so that you can cross. And then bicycle facility, facilities, shared use paths, bicycle lanes, bicycle parking fixtures. Next slide, please. And now, there are challenges, um, and you could probably help me out with this, uh, on, on what challenges uh, West Newbury has in actually making these improvements. Um, first, this funding isn't available for Route one thirteen. That's a big problem because the rest of all your roads are smaller roads. Um, I'm not sure there's enough room for sidewalks, so you've got physical constraints, you've got your rock walls, trees, um, narrow roads, and Angus tells me that then, in some cases, there's a, there's a lack of town road layout information too. Um, so these are all challenges, um, you know, we can overcome them if we decide to go forward with it, but, um, they're there. Next slide, please. Um, I thought it'd be interesting to look at how many communities have taken advantage of this and had projects, and I know because Middleton has had several projects already, Salisbury's had several projects, so a lot of these towns haven't just used it once, they've used it multiple times. And, um, you know, the bigger communities have grants departments and people working just on grants. Um, it's the smaller towns that kind of fall through the cracks that don't really have the bandwidth to apply for these types of grants. Um, next slide, please. And this is just a sampling, I took just the surrounding community so you could see the types of projects, um, there's crosswalks, um, sidewalks, reconfiguration of intersections, um, et cetera, oh, a shared use path along Parker Street, so I actually walked that every weekend in Newburyport. I didn't realize they applied through this program for it. Um, and there in Georgetown, you see an R R F B, speed feedback signs, et cetera. Next slide, please. Okay, so what?
For a question?
Sure.
So, I wonder where, wh- what street in Georgetown, that wasn't on ninety-seven, was it? Because there is one on ninety-seven, I think, North Street, okay, I'm not sure where North Street is in Georgetown.
Yeah, I, I don't know where it is. I should, I live in the next town over, but. Um, okay, so what we need to decide is, wh- first of all, if we, if we have the bandwidth, I guess, among staff to apply for this type of program. Um, and then we would develop a complete streets policy, submit it. Um, and, and the state actually allows you to do those two steps simultaneously, so we could submit our complete streets policy and actually submit, um, an application for the funds to hire someone to do our prioritization plan, to speed things up so that we would be within a year, ready to apply for the funds. Um, next slide, please. Okay, so this is, um, I'm jumping right to shared streets and spaces. And instead of going through the, a whole slideshow for shared streets and spaces, I'm just gonna compare the two. Um, because they, they're similar in a lot of ways and different in ways. Um, they're both Mast D O T programs, so these are reimbursement programs, it, it acts like Chapter ninety funds where you spend the money upfront and then you ask for reimbursement, and so we'd have to create an account, and I'm not sure the, the accounting term for it, but it's a, an account where you can use the money for something and then get reimbursed for it later. Um, so the original objective with shared streets and spaces, this is a little background on it, it popped up during the pandemic. Um, I remember it clearly because I was working out of the house, and when this program came up, they just wanted to, they were trying to figure out ways to help the state because we were in lockdown, and they figured, how about giving money to towns for outdoor areas? And so that's, that was the original reason for this, is they wanted outdoor areas, that's when restaurants were moving outdoors. Um, and they wanted people to be able to get out and walk safely. Um, in Middleton, we applied for the first leg of our rail trail, we hadn't built any of our rail trail, and this actually was the catalyst for now we've got about six miles of it built. Um, however, they don't allow it to be used for rail trail funds anymore. Oops, sorry, I've gotta call them. Silence that. Um, and so this program offers a little less funding per round than the Complete Streets Program, but it's much easier to apply for. Um, and so there, there's less involved in it. And another thing is though, we're not really sure how long it'll be offered, Complete Streets is a pretty solid program. I think it's gonna be around for years. The Shared Streets, I keep waiting for them to say, okay, we're not gonna do this anymore, cause it is very similar to the Complete Streets Program. But it'd be great for us to use it while we could because we can use that money on Route one thirteen. Next slide, please. Oh, and here's just the comparison, um, yep, they're both Mast D O T programs. Um, the objective of Complete Streets was all about complete streets, um, design, you know, pedestrians, bicycles, et cetera. The Shared Streets Program, really the genesis was the pandemic, and so we want, they wanted to get people outside and it, and it, you can use the money for moving restaurants outside, et cetera, so it isn't just pedestrian bicycle improvements. Um, maximum funding, Complete Streets is five hundred thousand over four-year period, and Shared Streets is two hundred fifty per year. I don't think it's likely that you would get that grant two years in a row, however, but I don't know if that's a rule or not. Um, and also, I have seen it go above two hundred fifty, and I'm not sure the state's reasoning in going above two hundred fifty, but like for the city of Boston, they went above two fifty, and when two towns went in for, um, the grant application together, they gave more than two fifty, so there is wiggle room there. Um, and state layout, yes, shared streets, we can use it for one thirteen, we cannot use complete streets for one thirteen. And again, complete streets, it's a lengthy application process, it's gonna take two years to finally apply for funds. Shared streets, we could apply, um, tomorrow. And, and also I saw that they're giving rural towns priority too. Um, and so shared streets is something that we could use probably in the next year and apply for. And then while we're getting ready to apply for complete streets, and that's if we have the bandwidth. Um, and I think that does it. Oh, and here's some, um, samples of com- complete streets awards and shared streets and spaces awards, and I'll just let you read through them, it's just to give you an idea of, of what types of improvements the towns are using these things for. Did you have any questions on this?
I have one question, on the shared streets, whereas it could be used on the state highway, how cumbersome is the process to apply because could we not do that and use it to offset some of the cost of the page crossing?
I think the dead, was the deadline in January?
Uh, yeah, there's a, uh, January thirteenth deadline, um.
It says the process, application requires none, makes it sound like a C, I just don't know what it entails.
Mm-hmm.
It was a matter of standing the state, we got a project ready to rock and roll.
Mm-hmm.
Two hundred fifty thousand would be helpful.
So, so the application process was fairly easy, oh, I know what the problem is. So in a state layout, that means we need to get the, um, the state permit.
Well, it's fully permitted, that, he's referring to the page pipe stage, so that one's right now at the seventy-five hundred percent design stage. Uh, so I, you know, that's, that's something we can look into, cause if it's, if it's an easy application.
And if it's going away.
Right.
Where it goes and it comes down to the state highway, where's the other camp, so.
Right.
Might be a missed opportunity.
Yeah. That might be our only opportunity to be using.
I was also thinking about the town center, that plan that we were kind of diving around, you know, for that intersection there, I don't know if that's.
I'm just thinking, well, the others already.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Process.
Yeah, and, and based on timing, I don't know if there's any possible way that, yeah, I mean, that the, um, the page crossing is teed up, ready to go.
Yeah.
Notice, we've been funded with.
It is a fairly straightforward application.
Thousand, right?
Okay.
So Angus, I think, didn't you wanna talk about, um, like, how we have to figure out who is, who is running the project too, and do we have enough, um, staff to run the project?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, we're probably not gonna get into all that tonight, I, I think, tonight, wanted to give the board and, and, uh, those who are watching, kind of a baseline, uh, understanding of the programs, and, uh, the board, uh, had, went over the summer, had had a couple of goal-setting sessions and prioritization, and Complete Streets had been listed, it had been listed as like a future kind of post.
Yeah.
Post FY, I think it was post, uh, FY twenty-five, so not necessarily FY twenty-six, but not before that. So, um, uh, you know, they can revisit those priorities, but, um, obviously, the reason was set is because there's a, such a full plate, uh, right now, so. But, but I think this has been, the intent of this, and I think this is, uh, exactly what, what you did, Katrina, which is great, is they give everybody a more complete understanding of what, what's involved, uh, so we can go into it, if we do go into it, eyes wide open.
Yeah, I'm wondering if the Complete Streets, you know, there might be an opportunity there over the course of the next two years, or immediately following, um, two years when the Middle Street Bridges completed, um, some form of calming to try to discourage trucks using that as a, as a, uh, as a, as a route, um, you know, to keep, cause it now would be like beautiful bridge. Um, that, um, that, you know, will probably be appealing as an alternate route to the, uh, um, or might be alternate route to the, down Newburyport Industrial Park.
Another, uh, potential project in this, a waste down the road, but, uh, that's come up in, in some of our working meetings on the Route one thirteen corridor planning is, uh, the stretch of Bachelor Street from, uh, Route one thirteen down to, uh, down to Ballfields and, and beyond that, to the housing, that might be a natural place for a, to get, try to get a sidewalk on one side of the road, and that would be something that would, would be, uh, eligible on the Complete Street, so there's definitely projects.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
But, uh, can I go back to the page school one, because the concern was you didn't have the staff come in, that's already gonna be done.
Right, right.
It's just.
I think for the.
You're gonna compensate the grant, that's the labor at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, I agree, that's the most immediate.
Yeah, no, we'll, I made a note to look into that, whether that, I know there's a January thirteenth, uh, deadline, so if we were gonna do that, you know, if it's an easy lift, then it's, it isn't already. On it, so, yeah, we'll definitely look at that, cause.
Any other questions for Katrina?
No.
All right, thank you, Katia, it was really helpful.
Oh, yeah, thank you for inviting me, and thank you, thank you for putting me up front on the agenda too. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, item D, Board Commission Committee Updates, um, so I just wanted to have an opportunity to just follow up on our joint meeting with the planning board and thoughts.
Yeah. I've been wrote them down.
Yeah. I would like to find a way, uh, it's very apparent that you're not totally on board with this, and I wanna find a way for us to move forward without.
Well, that meeting was disjointed, it was fact of control, so I didn't really say it much at the time, so I just wrote it down, I'll run through it quick. We, we give you two options. And said we have to pick one, someone spent a lot of time to decide that these are the two parcels and this is their criteria, but I don't know exactly how they did it, now they want us to participate in selecting one of the two. So we're basically ignoring every other parcel in town, and we're picking from one of the two, as to which is basically the least objectionable. So that, I find very difficult, so I thought about it like this, and kind of we go, probably chuckle. Suppose you wanna go and get a new car, you walk onto the car lot, there's seventeen hundred cars. I'm referencing seventeen hundred parcels in town, you know, in, you know, all colors, sizes, everything else. But the dealer comes up to you and says, you can buy one of two cars, the Mazda Miata or the Tesla Cybertruck. And he's decided that that's what you can buy, you gotta pick one of the two. They're both terrible decisions, and you haven't had a choice, and that's pretty much what will face him at this point with this plan. So my next thought was on these two parcels, I don't even evaluate the parcel, it comes down to one criteria. And that is, is there a genuine interest to embrace the M V T A mandate, build them up? Because if there is, you've got one parcel, you have a known, who has no interest in doing anything, and it's not to sale. So you can pass it, and then you're pretty much gonna bury the component of the M V T A housing for quite a while. The other parcel, you've got it under agreement, and you've got a known quantity on a respectable developer. So when, 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 and I'm not gonna be voting on this, cause I don't think it's appropriate, but when they do vote on it, that's basically what they're voting on, is, are they embracing the mandate or not, it really isn't the parcels. And I guess the last thing is, if you were to pick the done property, what's gonna happen is you're gonna get some developers who are gonna realize there's a lot of money to be made there, so the, the value of the property today versus what it'll be worth the day after you vote on it, is gonna go up so much so that whatever you're envisioning on that parcel for density is gonna have to increase significantly to cover their upfront costs. So that's another, uh, big consideration, so basically, I'm not gonna pick a Mazda or a Tesla truck, I don't think either one's a good choice.
So if I could just respond to that, I mean, we had a grant from the state and hired a consulting firm to, to go through the entire car lot and evaluate every seventeen hundred.
We weren't part of that process.
Right, but we got thirty-four, but we got thirty-four, um, so there was a methodical process, certain, you know, had to be a certain size, open space parcels, you know, conservation properties were rolled out, and so, I mean, there was a thoughtful, methodical process.
There, there was some public participation too, and I don't recall if you were there or not, Chris, but.
I, I was not at most of it, I wasn't.
Okay, so there was a public process, and, um, you know, there was opportunity to, you know, to make comment about not just these parcels, but about any parcel in town, and boy, I don't remember the context, but I mean, there was, I, I know I was in at least one meeting, and maybe it was that I sat in on the planning board meeting, I don't recall. Yeah, and, and, uh, but there was at least one meeting where there was explanation of how they arrived at those particular parcels.
Those meetings, I'm gonna assume that you were as a participant, not as a person who's gonna be voting on these parcels. Cause up until a couple of weeks ago, there was no indication that the select board was going to be. Um making a cooperative choice with the planning board on this. My understanding is then they were gonna present us with a parcel, they were gonna make that choice, I just, I don't have the confidence that. I have enough information to make a proper choice.
Yeah, so I guess that's on me, I I just thought for this to move forward, it would. The best chance of it would be if the select board and planning board were in alignment on it, so I might have overstepped. You know, by not making sure both of you were in agreement with that, that's why I wanted to talk about, if we wanna move back and just let the planning board carry it forward. You know, that's a decision we should make.
I think on the parcel selection, it's preferable, like I said, I will. Ultimately, whether I agree with it or not, support the vote on the MBTA housing, so that the residents get to have their vote on it.
Rick, what do you think about it?
Um, I'd kinda like the idea of participating in the discussion with the with the planning board, um and, you know. Although, land use is not specifically this board's responsibility. Um, you know, this board lives with all the decisions that are related to land use, and you know, all the results of what. Happens as a result of decisions.
If we don't comply with this, then it will impact what we're responsible for.
Right, right.
So, I mean, given that, Chris, you are not in agreement, how do we wanna move forward on this? Are you content to to be a silent bystander, or would you prefer that we, I mean, I don't wanna like have another meeting and have, you know. I mean, I would like it to be a consensus of how we look forward, even though we're not in agreement.
I don't have a problem with forward, they probably won't participate in their votes.
Any other um follow-up on the meeting, I mean, I thought it was generally useful.
I thought it was fine, yeah.
I I think you're aware, we did get the uh contracted place for the traffic, and that will be uh timely delivered. Uh so that will be, that information will be ready prior to the decision being made on which uh which parcel break forward, so that'll get to the planning board.
Financial analysis, is that on my agenda?
It's 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 included as correspondence, uh I did include it in the packet, uh so we did, we did receive that.
I'll get to that later then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that? I I wasn't able to go to the planning board meeting um this week, so I don't know, did you hear any follow-up from them?
I I only that uh there were no further comments on the traffic scope, and I had gotten a note from Ray. Uh Brian had already let me know he thought it looked good, uh he had one tweet that that we made. And uh Ray thought it looked good, and so I talked to Katrina Wednesday morning, make sure there were no other comments, and once I, once I got that, okay, I went ahead and signed the contract.
Yeah, that's great, and happy that TBC was able to.
I think it's gonna work out well, it was a natural fit, I I got uh, you know, reasons to, but. Yeah.
Okay. Alright, um moving on to item B, so uh this is follow-up to the Millpond markers conversation. Uh Matt was not able to be here tonight to Millpond share, and I told him I didn't think it was necessary. Now, Steve Greason was one of the people that were saying that's way too many markers, and so I just shared his email, and he actually went out and walked all the trails and. Had a complete change of heart on that, he also redid the map, so it's more to scale, so it doesn't look as um crazy as the other one did. And I, Angus and I kind of pieced this together after the fact, uh the board in fact did not see that Millpond map. Um, the reason why is we pushed ahead and approved that CPA application without. The funding application ever being considered by the CPSC, I don't know if you recall, I have a special loan money, we thought we'll just get it off the table. So, the two of you had not seen that.
We approved the funding, not the concept.
Oh, but the funding is based on the concept. Well, I I would just caution, in the future events, a small dollar item, you should take the time to make sure we see the whole.
Agreed.
Yeah, so I don't know if either of you had any specific questions you want me to run by, Matt. Um, Steve Greason also put in, he's he likes these diamond trail markers, I I think that's the call of the Millpond today. And I don't know that we we get involved in that.
Yeah, well, I I actually did have a question regarding the diamond trail markers, I'm looking at the one on page forty-seven in the package, Millpond Trails thirty-five.
Yeah.
Um, so, these would be mounted on trees that are roughly round.
So, the diamonds is not what Millpond's proposing, they're proposing with three by seven.
Oh, okay.
Would like to see the the diamonds.
I'm sorry, say that again, that's what Steve.
Steve Greason, he thinks these are better than what Millpond is proposing.
Okay.
So.
And I'll just say, I, they're shown with four screws on four corners, and I don't know how you do that on a round tree.
Really, but you don't have to use all four.
Maybe you could, you know, bring a chainsaw and carve a flat section.
Yeah. So, um, any, is this adequate follow-up? Yeah.
A lot of times on your signs, it's a blank, and they have the four holes in it, and then they put their covering over it. And they'll use two appropriate ones, and the other ones they cover up, you can do it however you wanna do it.
Yeah, that makes sense. Uh, so, do we want more follow-up in this, or is this adequate for? Alright, just making sure, cause you said not to do it offline, you wanted to discuss it in the meeting, so.
I had the meeting last time, yeah.
Okay, good. Good. Um, so one other um board commission uh update, uh Open Space Committee met last night, um I'm gonna be used on to that. And uh, so just a couple of things to be aware of, um. The O OSRP, the Open Space and Recreation Plan, you know, we that we have a hard stop that has to be in by December of uh twenty twenty-five. Conservation agent has been working on a scope, um and it's, there's been some discussion about. Otherwise, last night, the Open Space Committee thought they should be the one that prepares the scope, not the conservation agent. So, it's a little frustrating because uh the prior conservation agent was trying to get them engaged and help them scope, you know, several months ago. So, um, I just wanna make you aware that that's something that we're gonna have to manage at a staff level, it's not clear. Who's in charge, I mean, the bio states that the Open Space Committee, that's their responsibility, but. Functionally, somebody on staff has to do the work and hire the contractor and manage the project, so just wanna make you aware of that. We're not the world's challenge, Angus, did you wanna add anything to that?
No, that's a, that's a good synopsis. Yeah, well, I guess I'll just add, we, you know, the the timeline that we had anticipated, going back to August, when we started working on the CPA funding application, was to. Uh get the funding approved in the fall town meeting, which we did, uh we got a a working draft scope there, which was helpful for budgeting purposes. But but the idea was to get the scope finalized in November, move forward, get someone under contract, so they can really get started. In January, and now here we are, it's almost January, and and there's now a question about the scope, it's been. In process for months, and uh, yeah, the former agent had had reached out to the committee, starting in early calendar year twenty twenty-four, saying. Hey, this plan's gonna expire multiple times, and anyway, so this this, it's. At at some point, we need to allow staff to do what they're hired to do, but that's that's a conversation we'll have. Right people, but I, it was a little frustrating when I learned about last night's meeting, this morning, that. We we didn't realize that was still, I guess, a controversial issue.
Angus had uh specifically attended the October meeting of the Open Space Committee, just to make sure there were no concerns and, you know.
And that one. So, yeah, I mean, we'd like, you know, our concern is if if we're delayed on getting getting uh a contractor on board and get really getting the plan. Process started, that's just gonna squeeze the public process and and uh, you know, we think it's gonna take the full year. We we really wanna get this thing started in January, not March or April, so we'll see.
Yeah.
I appreciate Wendy going, going to those meetings, so there are a lot involved with that.
Any other liaisons, have any, either of you been to any meetings you wanna share with us, other than the board? No?
Yeah, well, I was at Energy Sustainability last night, and we uh. You know, we did talk about the municipal aggregation, I already explained that, you know, the recommendation from that, um. Uh, you know, also, there's there's um continued interest in in um pursuing the L and E street lamps. And uh.
Was that on the medium term?
That 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 was, so we're just, yeah, or I believe that was medium term, um. And uh, yeah, so, the committee is just trying to do what it can to to move. Things, you know, to to put things in place, to make sure we understand as much detail as we can about um, you know, things like light color. You know, what would be the appropriate light color? Um, uh, and, you know, so we need to understand what is in other communities, so we can look at them and and uh, you know. Make care, make a judgment. The uh. The offering for National Grid is somewhat limited, um you know, they only have two light colors, and they're. The um, you know, basically, it's a, you know, a Kelvin, you know, to describe it, you know, the Kelvin color. Um, and and um, uh, their lowest is three thousand Kelvin, and. That might be brighter than we want, you know, a lighter light, they, you know, not as as uh. As normal light that you wanna have, and so, that's something that we have to look into further, that has to be looked into further. And then there was also some discussion about uh the energy manager, and I kind of, I related, well, we'll we'll get to that later, cause that's on the agenda, but.
Right, thanks. Alright, being action items, uh item A is petition to install electrical conduit in the area of Marina Drive. We have John Butler from National Grid here.
This petition is to add facilities to Marina Drive. They'll serve one eighteen where they're building a new house. I don't know how uh. It wasn't actually provided in the initial development years ago, but for some reason, the electric to that lot. It'll come from the transformer of lot fifteen, number fifteen. Uh conduit was never put in for the facilities. And. That's what's needed now, about a hundred and thirty feet of underground conduit. The conduit itself goes in the public taking. So that if there's further maintenance to be done on it, it's not done on private property. So, in this case, it will be in the outside of the paved area, which I assume would be. Sidewalk if they existed, it's a grass area now, with the exception of. A portion of the driveway at number fifteen, which they have to deal with. Which right now looks like it's primary, that area of the driveway looks like it's primarily bulk storage, but regardless, it's, they still have to. Restore that when they install the conduit. The conduit is installed by the contractor. Or the customer. The company does have someone who inspects the installation, but the company doesn't do the actual underground installation. We take ownership of it after the fact and maintain it, but in this case, the the contractor. It's building a home, pays the responsibility for the installation.
Do you inspect the installation? Does does National Grid inspect the installation?
We have someone in the underground apartment, and and he follows these these projects as far as. The depth, the backfill qualities, and in this case. Uh, it would have to be concrete encased under the drivable surface of the driveway. We installed, company employees installed the actual wire and so on and so forth, once and soon. The whole box termination point, because we take a certain amount of area. Maintenance going forward, I know, we do easement on the private property for that. But the conduit goes in the public taking, that's the reason for the petition.
Any questions, Chris?
I didn't know if. What they were gonna do as far as allowing the installation of it and when. Because in general, usually as far as roads are concerned, after a certain time of year, it's. Not done.
Well, is it going in the road or in the, you said in the grass on the side?
No, but it's not, that's what I mean, it's, it will be outside the driven surface, it'll be outside the road in the in in the sidewalk area.
My question, ultimately, be to defer to Butch, if he's the expert, is there any problem with that this time of year?
No. The only payment they're gonna do across is the existing driveway of what, fifteen?
Yeah.
And then they're gonna follow the outside uh diameter of the circle. And then there won't be any cutting or use of your back payment on the inside.
So, whereas this is the owner and their contractor doing it in public right away, is there a bond required? Suppose they dig it and screw it up a mile away, I mean, you could have some assurance that it gets done, right? Problem.
Do you have anything about that?
No, I know, I've had, it'd be up to them to restore whatever, if right now there's nothing, they have scrubbed grass, but we have to them to restore. Whatever's there now.
Is there some kind of document that?
To finish. We don't get any guarantee document, no, I did ask for uh direct contact information on this, cause I thought it might come up. And yes, I think it was yesterday I received, I was gonna leave that with Butch, as far as. Who the contractor is, if it's actually doing the work, and contact information for that contractor. About that, so that could be provided.
Can I suggest a few other things, and I could, cause I think the process is lacking.
Okay.
This point, I think first of all, we need to know who the contractor is, and the licensed volunteer. I would suggest Avon to guarantee the work is completed appropriately, I think you need to document the before. Verify the after, and have a schedule of when they're gonna start and when they participate to complete, without that, you're kinda. Trying in good faith, and I think we've seen that, usually that works, but when it doesn't, it doesn't help us, so. That's my suggestions, and also like that Butch, if there's any involvement. Involved in the town's perspective.
So, this is just left up to the customers, contractor to do the work, there's no planned oversight by National Grid?
Well, again, National Grid provides. An inspector to inspect the installation of it.
When it's done, when it's all done.
Right.
They're not here while it's being installed.
No, they're there, he has to be there. Conduit is when they dig and they install the conduit, he has to be there, because it has to be a certain depth, it has to be um. Backfill in a certain manner, and it has to be concrete encased under drivable surfaces.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, there is somebody there supervising the work, to make sure it's.
Well, I have to mine, mine was on private property, it was thirty years ago, this is when they changed it, made the owner, the property owner, so I had it. Same thing, and the inspector was there for the entire week, but that was on National Grid.
Yeah, so that does not address your concerns about the.
That's protecting National Grid, we're not protecting the town, mine is on private property, yeah, I think that's different.
Do you have any idea how long the work will take? I mean, what would you?
The way the house is going along, I wouldn't think they'd waste any time getting it done.
Yeah.
It's a pretty significant investment, and unless they're gonna do it on the generators, they're gonna need. Heat and so forth, once they get into the inside work, to move the project along.
I'm just wondering if it's practical to ask Butch to be the town's.
I don't think it has to be there at all time.
Yeah.
Not not at all, but I'd like this, I would think Butch would wanna see it once it's excavated, think he wanna be before it's backfilled, not at all. I mean, is that reasonable, that would you?
Yeah.
Now, what what, so about Avon, Angus, is that something that they do?
No, I I'm not, I'm, I don't know that you couldn't, but I I've never heard that come up, yeah, I have a question, it's never.
You're letting a private, individual work on town property?
No, no, I I understand, I understand your rationale, it's just, it's uh.
So, it's not something we've done, we can just cut and paste it?
Well, as a planning board, for five months, if all the contractors do it.
But but that's typical practice for a planning board, so it's it's.
Well, I don't think it's proven not to have a bond.
I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying it's never been done, so if there's something we're gonna need to do, we're gonna need to start putting more staff on toward these issues. That's, which is fine, it just. Which is fine, it just
Well, I don't think the request that the contractor provide a bond for twenty grand to secure the project is, I mean, that doesn't take effort from the town, does it?
Someone's gonna ask, someone's gonna receive, someone's gonna file, it's, you know.
Paperwork.
It's, Chris, you know, we're, every single hour of every day, we are, I'm not saying we can't do it, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying if that's gonna be the expectation, it's just gonna it'll just cost more time, which is fine, if that's what the board wants, so I've never heard the question asked.
Yeah.
Have we had private individuals working on the town property? See, that, that's the concern, what happens if something goes south here? Somebody says, well, why didn't you have responsibility for it? We don't. So that's my concern.
Rick, what are your thoughts on that?
I, I, I think I agree with Chris that we ought to be secured somehow and you know, I'm sensitive to the fact that somebody from the town has to has to accept this and deal with it, but and it's hard to imagine it going very far south, but if it does, then who is gonna fix it? And that'll undefeated town. Although, you know, if, if we don't have some security with the contractor, I mean, it isn't like it's a huge job, you know, digging the trench a hundred and thirty-six feet and, and get the conduit in there, which is more National Grid's issue if that's done right and, and the backfill.
So what's involved in getting a bond? I don't have any experience with it, it's just a request, is there
They pay a fee to a bonding company, the bonding company presents the town with the documents, so that there's certain priorities.
But we have to contact the bonding companies and send them
Tell the contractor, the homeowner.
That they have
That they can't proceed till they provide the town with a bond, like someone does.
And if we do that initially, would we have town council review the bonds, or is there someone on staff who's gonna know what they're looking for?
It sounds like no, because we haven't done this before.
I, I, I'm just not aware.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, how different would it be from a bond that the planning board would require? If, you know, so if there's
Which, which are reviewed by council?
Oh, they are reviewed, okay.
All right, is, is this a separate issue from what's before us now? I mean, is it?
Well
What?
Initially initially, when it's done, it's all put in one before the development is accepted by the town and the easements and all that work. On the developer himself.
Right.
And then if the town takes the road over, town accepts the road when the contractor is finished and it's out there. And these facilities are usually all in. I know, and I don't know when I put it, a little too long ago, I know there have been some there has been some other work in the road though, I might have done the crossings myself years ago. Where there weren't facilities. They did some subdivision, some of those lots down there, I think got approved at some point in time. Actually, I think when it was fifteen, that some subdivision had been done down there after the fact. And we had to put some additional facilities in for. But in most cases, it's not accounted because it's all done ahead of time when the development is done. In this case, I don't know what when they get the building permit to do what they, from the town, they approve them doing what they're doing, I don't know what, whether they provide any overall paperwork or not to secure that building for them to do what they're doing. I don't know how that all plays place.
So that's a separate issue, I think, from the, from the Grid's request of approving this, right? So can we move forward with that and then follow up on, on the other, on the bonding and?
Right, well, if we if we approve National Grid's request at this point, essentially that's giving the go-ahead to, to perform the work in the town right of way, isn't it?
I, I don't know.
And, and I, I don't want to not do that, you know, because it's not a big deal, except I think Chris has a valid point that, you know, there's work going on in the town right of way and and the town isn't secured in any way if somehow it goes south. And that is just kinda unique that, that, you know, a private party is doing the work in the town right of way.
I'm just trying to see if we can address John's request or whether we need to table this until we
Can we give like provisional approval?
Does that work for you?
What I'd like to do, if we can, is I, I'd have to give it to customer service rep. Probably one that deals with the town. One that's assigned to the town. And if the petition's approved, it's approved based on contract to provide the bond, then it will be up to whoever's doing the work to, before they started, to come get the bond from the town. I, I don't know anything about that process, I've never been involved in anything like that in a circumstance like this. So it's certainly, National Grid isn't gonna get it.
Right.
Certainly, because they're not, we don't even call in a date safe, we're doing the digging.
Right.
That's all, so and as far as like, well, we're opening permits and all those things, they all come from whoever's actually doing the work, not I did anticipate some questions about it in the first place, that's why I asked. And I didn't, I just barely, I just received it yesterday, the day before, asked for some I had a feeling that someone might ask for direct contact of whoever's gonna be doing the work, because I didn't know who it's from. And that was provided. I brought that, and it's Butch wanted it.
Yeah.
But other than that, that would be up to them to search on the process to get a bond and getting it, if they're gonna do it, the company wouldn't.
Right, but you, in your approval or your permit, can you say that the contractor has to give a bond? That that's how you started this?
Well, we can tell them that they can't move forward until they get one, as far as us providing it.
No, that's you, we're just asking you to, to make that requirement and then we can, you know, everybody sit on our own, and that way we can both move forward.
Well, you can approve it here, I'm not gonna satisfy it on the job requirement. The job can't be scheduled until it's satisfied on the job requirement. And I'm not gonna satisfy on the job requirement and then be here later for a future petition and when something wasn't done, it's agreed to be done. So I'm not gonna give
It's our calls apart, there's no responsibility, you, you have to have a responsible party.
All right, then we'll have to just table this then, we'll have to wait, and, and if you can't make it part of your approval.
I, I think that's the right decision, because someone's gonna be paying the cost of this, presumably the home builder or the buyer, so they're gonna need to agree to that and, and I would much rather they aren't made aware of it and then they could come to the continued hearing rather than made aware of it after the board's voted, in which case, I don't know if there's you know, an appeal provision, but I, I just don't know how this will ricochet.
Yeah.
All I know is it's, it's just not, not something I've seen before, so. But normally, these are petitions for pull, they're not where National Grid's doing the work.
Right, right. Yeah, that's the difference, is that National Grid is, you know, well-secured, but, you know, but we don't know about whoever else is gonna be doing the work.
I just, oh, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I asked her.
The transformer, the pad mound transformer, and it's in the town right of way? Because you said it's, it's
No.
It's on the private property and then they need easement to access it.
Okay, so the transformer is actually located on the private property?
Transformer's in handholds when a development is drawn up. It is in a basic instruction book that's provided to contractors, if someone wants that.
Oh, yeah, we can see there, I mean, it's
I'll leave it with Butch, but what's it gonna say? Okay, the we take easement for future getting all kind of a mess through at the transformer location, but that has nothing to do with this issue tonight. In other words, there's a ten-foot easement for where that transformer is. That's a ten-foot square, and that's on
That's your, that's granted to National Grid.
That's on private property.
Yeah.
And we take it on private property because when it's on the private property, then that gives the person who owns the property likes to get to it without crossing something else. So their underground services on their property and they can get to the transformer or the handhole without any other legal paperwork. They own the service from the transformer to the house. Likewise, with the handhole in this case, we take easement, I, I draw easement and that's when I believe satisfied by the customer already. For the handhole that's there. There's already two pedestals there, I'm gonna assume that they're usable, one, one would be for horizon and the other would be for cable. I don't know how it was missed in the first place that the that the conduit wasn't put in in the first place, I had to. But I do know over the years, there have been some other changes here because it wasn't there or because something was subdivided and we had to go across again. You know, I know there was a couple times, but it was so long ago, I forget whether I did them or not, it was quite a while.
So
Either way, if that grass area that's there and the driveway of the which is also public taken, but it's the driveway frontage for the customer. If there's a concern about that and a, and a bond is necessary, then I haven't encountered that before, but if it's necessary, it's necessary. The investment that's involved here and what's being done, I would think that what had to be done to have a good finished product would be done as far as I dealt that grass and all that stuff will be there when that house is finished, it probably ends up out with a little landscape and I would think. But, you know, just gonna receive the don't have any control, don't have any control over that.
So why don't we move on to the petition to install the pole?
So is this, I would say this is a public hearing, so we'll need to get a motion to
Does it continue?
Yeah. Yeah, we have to resolve this issue, so.
Okay, I get it.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, so
So, yeah, do we make a motion to continue?
Yeah, because we sent a legal notice for, for kind of screening, so it's gotta continue to the circumstances.
Okay, so
Yeah, we, we have someone on from Norino Drive, I'm not sure if this is why, why she's here, but we do have a resident.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Who listens to that on the screen?
Mary.
Who would?
Mary Ann, did you wanna speak to this topic?
Um, I haven't seen the plans for where, um, exactly the conduit, I didn't have a chance, an opportunity to get, to get down to the to the town offices to actually see. We're at fourteen. So we're a couple homes away from where this new home build is going in. But I, I don't, are, are there plans that you're looking at right now?
Yes, can you, are you on your phone?
No, I'm on a, I'm on a laptop.
So can you see that we're sharing the screen if you the town manager has the, the plan up that shows the location of the conduit?
I can see the town manager, I can see you, and then I can see kind of a, a wide view of the room that you're all in, but I can't actually see the what is projected.
Okay, let's, we'll, we'll try to reset.
I just did a new share, does that?
There we go, I can see it now, I can see it now.
Okay. So it's just going along the top of that kind of turnaround at the end?
Right, right, so that's not, it's not affecting our property. Where it, yep, yep.
I would assume the notice would be notified.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were.
Does that, did you have any other questions, Mary Ann?
I do not, no, not at this time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Sure.
Yeah, so, what, our first meeting in January, would, is that a reasonable date to
Yeah.
Continue to? And
So do we have to repost another legal?
Uh, no, no, as long as it's continued within the hearing.
Yeah.
That's January ninth, now, is that, are you able to? Do you need to be here again? I, I assume, I, I mean, you've already presented.
I think construction-wise, I think what's, if there's no disagreement with what we're doing and that. And at this point, just satisfying the completion of it. I wouldn't think
I, I don't think it's necessary.
It would be necessary.
No. But I mean, Butch has already said that it's
I, I'm gonna, in other words, I'll give it back, but I'm gonna bring it to the customer service rep that's assigned to West Norwood. Not to the customer rep that's assigned their work, you know, those people, you know, that's, that's, that's assigned to the service to the house itself.
Okay.
How would you all know? But who's, and it'll be up to him as far as I'm concerned, to express the request of the town to build this.
So you mean, who, who should they contact in the town?
Who? In the, in the process of obtaining the bond, who do they go to, who's gonna, who do they go to here? Who do they see here? The town.
I, I think that's gonna be me. I can, I'll, I'll type something up tomorrow with the board's expectation, I'll, I'll bounce it off town council to just make sure they're you know, come through, familiar with this type of bond, I'm sure they are.
Can you?
I have your email address, I could send you an email with the
Can you Yeah, email me?
Yeah.
And Would that, would I have it tomorrow, I think?
Yeah. Yeah, because I'm off next week, so I gotta
Also online, unfortunately, I have to use the time, or I lose it.
So, so is twenty thousand, is that the real number?
No, I don't know what the number
Okay, well, that was my, because I didn't know if that was a real number, so what, what's the number and how do we write the number?
Well, we, we should
I think from a construction standpoint, if there's something, oh, we, maybe Butch would be more about the cover of this ceiling on a minimum that it would take to back up anything they don't have.
So say a hundred and fifty feet of conduit, how deep, does it have to be too deep?
I believe we're, we're three at with, with, with three feet, I think, with second egg.
But you have any idea?
I wanna leave
For that on, on electrical conduit?
No, I mean, what the, you know, what the bond should be, the dollar amount.
I know.
All right.
If you wanna roll the dice, my comment, you're just trying to motivate a person to complete a project, because we're not we're not gonna replicate it if they don't finish it.
Right, so
I'd say five thousand dollars or, and it doesn't have, what, in planning work, you have one building in town, we just come in, give a check for it. You don't have to go to a bonding company if you don't want to.
But that's all set by staff duty, with a planning board, that's set by staff.
Right, but if, if the homeowner says, I'll give you a bond, or can I give you
One pounder to the next, it's the same across the Commonwealth.
So there's a difference, we may not, we may not be able to do it like that.
It's probably the same thing, but it's not, it's not a cookie cutter thing because it's not something that you know, but
I would say, I would suspect if it was my project and it was my house, I'd rather just give you the, the check, get the project done, get the check back.
Or sort of like a casher.
Yeah, first of all, having a service by bond, one or the other, and the simplest one, but we used to find that the good contractors would do the, the cash, now I don't think it's a huge deal.
So can we just say
The difference there is that there's a, there's a standard way to document that, whereas here, how do we, how yeah, I, I can see, I mean
I understand the frustration, I don't like the answer, but I think the town's got a liability if you just say go ahead, does it does it hit you? Probably not, you hope it doesn't, but we've seen in the past that these things do bite us.
Yeah.
All right, well, this is something we can work on on our own, I mean, can you make the motion to?
Right, yeah, I, I move that we continue this portion of the, of the public hearing on, on the Norino Drive line until our next meeting, which is January ninth, until the next select board meeting. And in the meantime
And in the meantime. At the end of um.
Thursday.
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
In the meantime, if someone that's in charge of the client, in charge of the project, is gonna come forward to someone. To satisfy those needs. Who would?
The town manager, thanks, Jen.
Uh, down at the counter, probably. They're they're down at the counter. Yeah, we'll we'll respond a number of times over the year, so I know I know you have my information, but but yeah, Jim can grab a card, but it's.
Yeah, all right, so all in favor of that motion, I, all right, let's move on to the second.
Okay. Second one was. A request, I think. From which I didn't get the paperwork, but I got. To remove a anchor from a tree that he has to finish taking down.
Okay.
And uh. I'm at the location for a support pole to fix the place, but on the street and state the guy down there.
Okay, okay. Incredible.
No, I don't know that.
Uh, Rich and Lisa, are you here for for this?
Yeah, so I moved that we um would uh. Better way to phrase that. But. Yeah, yeah, we approved the petition to um install a uh. Guide pole. For.
Four seventeen.
Four seventeen, okay, four seventeen Mill Street. Um, as as a request from National.
Right, name for the discussion. I just note that Bush reviewed it and he's. Uh, all in favor?
If you're all of us.
Right, I indeed, uh, no, I see, request for an amendment to the far lane parking restrictions.
So the board had previously discussed this and I think everyone's clear on what what the intent is, so. Uh, we would just, uh, you know, unless there's questions from Bush, we just look to a vote and then we would put that in the newspaper. We've already drawn up the uh. Legal act that goes in paper, which obviously hasn't sent it, but it wouldn't work. If it were votes, if we would put that in the paper and that would uh, that change take a back.
Questions?
Yeah, which are where, what we discussed at the last meeting, where the sign would be?
Uh, I believe so, but whatever, you know, we can, uh, questions to reiterate since he's here, we're gonna consider the second week motion.
But there's a question on on the far lane, are you?
Um, so you, I can no arms, arms?
Yeah, person had a question on it.
Last meeting, I, in my opinion, it would seem to be in agreement here. Is there currently the sign right by the new house because there's no parking this side? I think if we can replace that with a no parking from here, corner that way, so that they can park from there to the street, because otherwise the hill comes down. Right there, so they would be in the middle of the street at that point.
Uh, we have no problem doing that, or I've tried to sort within our deep wire. And we can take that sign down completely and leave it from the owner of Chestnut Main Street. They can park there.
It would seem to me, you tell me, because you're an expert on this. Like I say, if they park further down towards um. Chestnut, with that hill there, that car is gonna be out in the street because that hill comes hard. But in front of the house is that low grade, so they park a little on the grass and I think my preference, I don't know about this board, would be to.
I can put a no parking here in the corner.
Right.
Be done with it.
Yeah, no, I think that sounds good.
That's what I would. Well, that's my motion to that.
You say it again.
Replace the existing no parking sign. I don't know what the house number is, but.
But in the same location?
At the same location with no parking here to the corner, you narrow it, show that way, not the other way.
Okay. All right, all right, any further discussion? Did you want to say anything about this, Bush, or do we have your final?
Um, good with that and uh, something that was brought up, some, the no parking signs on Chestnut?
Um.
Yeah, there are some.
The first chestnut.
It was brought up, I don't know if it's still, no?
I don't think we're addressing it, no, it comes, just okay.
I think. I had mentioned at one point that that um, you know. A far lane, you take a right and then you take a left. Um, is that still Chestnut there or is that?
Yeah.
Okay, and you know, the street's considerably wider, you know, I think I asked. I remember writing the no parking signs there and I was just wondering why there were no parking signs there because the street is quite wide.
The reason there were no parking signs because when they were doing majority of parking on Farm Lane before the new school, they were migrating. Out to the backside of Chestnut.
Yeah.
The residents out there were voicing their concerns.
Yeah.
So we extended the no parking all the way around and up to Chestnut Hill.
Right, so is there any reason at this point, I mean, it's not. It's it's not gonna be used for that purpose, you know, in in that way anymore, but and you know, there might be incidental reasons why people do want.
Residents do want, yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah, residents of their guests could.
I spoke with Chief Weyer this morning about it. And uh, he is, I'll say, if they want to take them down, we will take them down. And I think there's on some of the paperwork that I've got on that, that there was, that was an approved no parking. So we can leave that in place. And if it comes to. Uh, initially later down the road, we can just go back and put the no parking signs back up. But those can come out, the Chestnut sign, the no parking sign can come out.
You agree that's a good decision?
Yeah, because we haven't had a problem. Uh, and like I say, we'll do the that small section of Farm Lane. And uh, everything else on Farm Lane will stay the same because it does narrow down after the first Chestnut, so leaving that no parking. The benefit, and then we can take the no parking on Chestnut, Chestnut Hill down. Like I say, if there's initially later down the road.
Right, do we need a separate motion for that?
Only if you're looking to change the regulation.
Okay.
So.
We're not, right?
Or is it just administrative who puts up sign?
Right, yeah, yeah, just because it's in the regulation, you're not required to post it, so if you want to leave it in place like what you're suggesting.
Or any agreement?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so it's just the original motion.
Okay, and it was seconded, right?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Bye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bush.
All right, we'll send the legal notice to the paper.
Okay. I indeed, this request for approval on local adoption of hazard mitigation plan, I have a session here, please.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. Thanks for allowing me to be here with you tonight. And um, I'm not sure Angus, it's you or James, it's plan with validation, but I apologize in advance because I have a few animations, so. I will try to give you cues of moving ahead, but I apologize for that.
Uh, I'm sorry, a few.
There's a few animations throughout.
Oh, I just have it in PDF.
Oh, that makes you like it, that's perfect.
Powerpoint slides.
That's totally fine. PDF is is just as good. Thank you. So thanks again for letting me be here tonight. Um, over the last twenty-four months, it's been a big process. I've been working alongside of West Newbury. Who has been updating their hazard mitigation plan with nine other communities in the region. Following that extensive process, we did receive confirmation from FEMA and MIMA that the plan is ready for approval. And so I'm here for you tonight to give you an overview of the plan itself and share a little bit about the local adoption process. So just an overview of what hazard mitigation plans are. These are essentially comprehensive plans that assess a community's vulnerability to natural hazards. And then outline the set of strategies the community can use over the next five years to try and reduce their vulnerability and risk. These plans are our department of FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Which requires that all communities in the country have an established hazard mitigation plan and update it once every five years to make sure it's relevant. In the Merrimack Valley, we completed our first regional plan in two thousand eight. It was updated in twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-four marks our second update of the plan. Having a plan in place and active plan does provide a number of benefits. The first is that going through this planning process allows you to uh understand a more comprehensive assessment of risk for your community. It also provides a roadmap, as I mentioned, to try to minimize that risk. And I think one of the most important aspects for communities is that having an active plan also qualifies you for non-emergency federal funding. So these are things like your hazard mitigation grant, your building resilient infrastructure community, or your brick grants, and your flood mitigation assistance as well as others. So right now, West Newbury qualifies for any emergency funding you may need, but you are not able to apply for non-emergency funding. Having your active plan back in place will allow you to apply for those grants. I also want to mention briefly before we move on that this plan is non-binding. It serves as a guidance document. So your community is not beholden to anything that's put in the plan. And come five years from now, you're welcome to reassess any of the strategies, activities, or conditions that are currently in there. Thanks, Angus. So just a quick note that, as I mentioned, West Newbury completed this with nine other communities in the region. The five communities in the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission region that didn't participate, were just on a slightly different timeline, or opted to do the plan. Uh, due to parallel planning efforts, such as updating their MVP plan at the same time. So I won't walk through all of these, but I do want to provide a quick overview of what went into updating this plan. You can see ten steps here, everything from forming a local plan to reviewing the old plan, assessing natural hazards, conducting a community inventory to better understand. Where the most important critical lifelines are in West Newbury. Kind of overlaying those two to better understand the vulnerability and ultimately making an action plan and a maintenance plan that we can put forth for the next five years. We did bring this plan um to a community public meeting back in July, June, thank you, I guess, June. Uh, that was the end of the MVP River Road, studying the final presentation that was done. We were able to join as well. We thought this was a fitting topic, thinking about a lot of these natural hazards that we're facing here. So we did provide an overview of the plan. In following that overview, we also conducted a six-week public comment period. We received all of those comments, um, worked with our local planning teams to integrate them into the plan, and submitted the plan to FEMA and MIMA this fall. MIMA and FEMA did give us a little bit of feedback. They wanted some more information about specific locations that were at risk for wildfires. And also for more information on high hazard dams in the region. So we added those additions and resubmitted the plan in November, in which it was, a second review was done and it was approved by them. Um, at this point, for the plan to actually be active, we do need each of the communities participating in the plan to adopt at the local level. At that point, we'll be able to let FEMA know it has been adopted and they'll be able to issue that final approval of the plan. So we are at step ten right now. But I will go into local adoption in that process, but beforehand, I know that your group hasn't necessarily seen an overview of the plan, so I just want to take just a few minutes to share some of the big highlights. And then I'll talk to you about that local adoption process. So as I mentioned, the first step was creating your local hazard mitigation planning team. This was a local effort absolutely thrown through. Your lead rep for the project was Christine Wallace, who may be on call with us now. Um, she was instrumental in convening this team and pulling us together, so thank you to Christine. And as you can see, there was broad representation from across your town. Um, from your leadership with Angus and Rick participating, as well as representation from your highway department, your seater, DPW, water department, conservation. Your emergency management, police and fire, your health agent, um, building inspector, and the town planner too. So we really had a lot of voices and a lot of minds coming together at each step of the process to give feedback and integrate that into the plan. The first thing that the the team did together was to assess natural hazards. So the state Massachusetts identifies fifteen natural hazards that can occur in the commonwealth. The local team assessed those across four different variables. You can see them listed on the left. It was the location, severity, and extent, previous occurrence, and future probability. They assessed each one of those using a scale and a process that we identified. And ultimately, um, created this matrix or this this chart here for your community. Identifying which of those fifteen hazards they felt like were high or are causing the most vulnerability to the community. Which of those they identified as moderate and which of those they identified as low. I think it's probably no surprise that we have things like wildfire throughout our extreme temperatures and our lots of our flooding, but. And totally influenced inland flooding, um, as well as riverine erosion that we're seeing showing up as those high hazards. Thanks, Angus. Once we had a sense of which um. Which of those hazards were most impactful to West Newbury, we conducted that lifeline inventory to assess where in the community are those really critical lifelines. Um, that we use every day. These are things like our schools, our emergency facilities, our communication towers, our grocery stores, our hospitals. Um, things that our our community relies on and needs. And I know it's a little hard to see, I apologize. We printed these out as big maps for the team to look at and and work with. But we essentially overlaid all of those icons of those lifelines with locations we were able to map of natural hazards. These are things like where we are seeing flooding, where we are seeing storm surge, locations of previous hurricane tracks. Um, earthquakes, tornadoes, changes in surface temperature, and we're trying to get a better sense of where in the community was risk the greatest. Now, this is kind of hard to see on this, so if you scroll to the next slide, Angus, for me, what we did next is we actually created a um composite map. Where we overlaid all of those hazards and the darker colors on the map indicate locations where multiple hazards are occurring in the past. So our darker colors, the orange and the red, those are locations in which we can experience multiple hazards. Um, and again, probably no, no great surprise that those are around um the Merrimack River where we are seeing a lot of things like flooding. So storm surge as well as erosion and slope instability. In addition to that analysis, the team also used some larger regional data as we found about projections. So they did consider things like sea level rise, um, changes in precipitation, as well as changes in temperature, as they really thought about the hazards that were impacting West Newbury. What came out of this was essentially a set of challenge statements, and these helped to identify the natural hazard that was occurring, the risk that it posed. And ultimately, the impact that it could have right here locally. Um, West Newbury came up with a total of nine of these, and I won't read them all, but I just want to highlight some themes throughout. So your team identified things like flooding and erosion of roadways, which when coupled with undersized and outdated infrastructure can pose major risk to mobility and transportation. They also identified storm events which can lead to frequent power outages. And extreme weather and storm events that can also be really impactful to vulnerable populations that might be limited in terms of their access to these resources and services. The team also identified climate change and extreme weather and storm impacts, which can be particularly born um. Impactful to more developed areas of the community. They also identified change in climate, increased temperature, which have led to things like increase in mosquito transmitted diseases. As well as heavy rainfall, which can cause things like CSO, um, events upstream and lead to degraded water quality down in the Lower Merin. Lastly, they identified on the other end of that, things like drought, which can be challenging to the town's water supply. Increased sea levels paired with more frequent coastal storms and increased precipitation, which can lead to additional flooding and erosion. And lastly, invasive species, which can further degrade our forests here, leading fuel to wildfires and also. Um, more continuous dry days, which can increase the risk of wildfires for the community. So with all these statements, these really specific statements on uh the natural hazards and the risks, the team ultimately created a mitigation action plan. This for West Newbury included nine different actions the community could undertake over the next five years to try to reduce their vulnerability. Uh, this is the matrix that's in the plan. I'm not going to read through the matrix here, but if you look at this in the plan. You'll see that for each action, it identifies the category of the action. So is it a planning, is it structural, is it education? What is the description of that action? This first one, for example, is to install generators at critical facilities of town offices, annex senior housing complex.
Can I ask any question on that one?
Oh, sure.
That's on the plan. Didn't we put a generator in? I thought we had funded money for.
We're we're putting one in the annex, so that's.
Didn't we, like thirty thousand dollars or something?
Yeah, is that, I turn the calls. I only supported the annex or supporting the.
The annex in the house. I thought the housing too, no?
We were about to come to an agreement with housing, sorry.
I thought I was replacing one that was there.
Yeah. And installing one that doesn't exist.
Those should just strike the annex off of there, I guess, is my question.
Thank you, yeah. And I will say, so this has been, as I mentioned, an iterative process that's may have been added as an action, you know, six months.
This plan's gonna process.
Exactly, yeah. Um, but what I will say is every five years, you basically go through this matrix and you put, your team provides an update of what was accomplished, what was not accomplished, what do we want to move forward or do we not? And so this will be one that you can already say you've achieved, you know, during the life of getting this plan adopted in fact. So again, this matrix identifies that action, uh, the hazard that's addressed, who at the local level would be responsible for helping to implement it. The team did list these in rank order based on priority, um, from ten being the highest and one being the lowest. And it also identifies the timeframe, cost, and resources that would be needed. There's also a little status update there that says, when was this original project added and what's the current update to? But I think this is one of the, I think, most helpful tools that will come out of this um plan itself. I also wanted to provide just a quick overview of what some of those actions were. As I mentioned, they include things like replacing undersized culvert swells and drainage systems, monitoring of the landfill site. Installing generators, as we just discussed, moving the communications antenna and transmitting equipment. Moving the communications antenna and transmitting equipment, increasing supply of potable water in the town. Managing invasives, conducting an assessment of evacuation routes. Setting erosion, flooding and impacts of sea level rise along the Merrimack River. And at large incorporating hazard mitigation into other local planning policies and programs.
One just point of interest, the telecom antenna was actually moved off the Park and Rec building last week.
There you go. Another one we can already know. You guys are just moving quick through this list.
Yeah, yeah. And going through this, actually, everything on this list we're currently doing, I mean, replace undersized culverts, swells and drainage.
What?
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that, so that, just that one, I mean, pretty much every single item on here, there's forward motion right now.
Yeah, I mean, I will say I've been through a number of these processes over the years and. And sometimes they're kind of cut and paste exercises. This has not been that. This has been a very hands-on. There have been a lot of working meetings. Rick has been a, if not all of them, I think just about all of them. So it's just been, you know. And, and I think that's reflected in the fact that you're seeing, you know, action items that are very much part of our work plan. Because it is in fact, and that was something that when we started with MVP C, whether it was 18 months or maybe even more than that, we were really clear. We do not want a cut and paste plan. We want a really meaningful process and they have really been extremely helpful.
So you're executing faster than they can do the plan.
Exactly.
That's pretty good. Still plumbing one. No, I know. Again, I know Rick's got a question. It's a good thing to have that kind of issue.
And I will say, the, one of the biggest benefits to doing this is that all of these goals are written down in some, some plan that you can point to. So a lot of times when you are applying for funding, they do say, where is this identified in your community needs? Maybe people say, we did this, you know, community planning process and this is what arose out of it and here it's written in our plan. You're able to really leverage that. And so clearly you haven't really needed that leverage to start getting this work done. But I think depending on what you take on next or what point you are in the process, hopefully it will still serve as that resource.
Well, to get the federal money, which are some of the bigger ticket items as we know.
Absolutely. So I think I just have one more slide for you and that's this local adoption process. As I mentioned, FEMA and MIMA have tentatively approved the plan. They put it in what's called AP status or approvable pending adoption. Once all of the 10 participating communities adopt the plan, we are basically able to send those signed resolutions to FEMA and they will issue their final approval. Because this is a non-binding document, adoption just indicates that the community feels that they've been involved in the planning process. And that the goals and local conditions are accurately reflected in the plan. So again, you're not beholden to anything that's in here. Adoption is made by an affirmative vote by your select board and a signed resolution by the select board chair in case local adoption. Once all the communities, as I mentioned, have signed, that's when the plan will be back in active status and you'll be able to apply for that funding. Over the next five years, we also set up a process where we'll check in with your lead rep every year. Get a sense of what's done, what's not done and give them some content that they can bring back to your board and give you an update on that. And we will continue to push out funding opportunities as we see that might align with the goals you outlined here.
How's, how's the adoption process going with all the other communities with the, how many communities were there?
We have 10. Yep, very well. So you're number six. We've seen the other five in the last week and a half and they've all adopted it. So move them right along. We're really hopeful by about the second week in January, we'll have all of them in. So thank you. I'm happy to answer questions and I appreciate your consideration. So thank you. And finally, a big thank you to our local planning team. As Angus mentioned, he was part of it. There was a tremendous amount of effort that went into it. So I'm very grateful.
Yeah, there were a lot of people who were really, really integrated into it. That was good.
Any further questions for the board? Anybody in the audience or online?
Just a quick comment. I didn't read the whole plan. I just looked at they aligned 300 turntable pages and at the time. Look at the summary. The one thing it tells me you were looking at this in a total and complete fashion, as you mentioned, the CSOs on the river. I've been beefing about that. It's like, we haven't done anything here, but to see it in the plan will now. It tells me you've looked at pretty much all the components of it. So I thought that's pretty, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. And that came directly from your team. So clearly there's some, there's some desire there to increase water quality. But I will say all of the upstream communities have really listed it as well, including those that they're experiencing those events directly in their community. So I think doing this regional process allows for more holistic view. I appreciate that.
But even to acknowledge it, that it's a, you know, a hazard, I think is, is a good thing.
Absolutely.
I make a motion that we adopt the hazard mitigation plan as presented.
Any further discussion on the paper?
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, we have a declaration. I don't know if you need a hard copy or we can.
You can scan it. Just fine, whenever. Thank you so much, Angus.
Thank you to all that was involved and the team that worked with him on that local delivery.
That's, it's been great. Yeah, everyone listed on that, on that slide, every single one of those people has been to all the meetings. They're going to really hands-on. So it's, it's been a great team. Just briefly on the removal of the, the telecom antenna. That was a very opportunistic thing and I want to credit the public works for that because basically they had the crane here to do the.
Put the E pop up on the.
Right. And, and it's what a day rate for the crane. So the crane operator was like, he got me for the day. So it was like a very, you know, Brian was.
It was effectively a freebie though.
Yeah, no, it was a really.
It was, it was like a $10,000 steal.
So and as it, as it turned out on Tuesday, I was at that MSBA meeting with, at P A school. And actually stood on the roof of P A school, which is a little daunting. I wouldn't probably do that again, but I could look down from above and see.
I hope to hear you say that you were up there watching and doing it.
Moving on to item E, this is going to be deferred until maybe our next meeting. We're still, so I don't know if you had any questions. If there's additional information we want to gather, but the Penn Tucket Parrot Alliance, they want to hang banners from the light poles. But we don't own the light poles. So we're trying to get clarification from National Grid about what's required. Sounds like they don't have an idea of what kind of attachments they want to use.
Yeah, I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that you wonder about, like how are they going to actually put them there and then, and then who? It's, it's, it's not going to be National Grid that will be doing it. So who's doing it and how? How are they secured, different kinds of secured in this case? How, how, you know, how, how do we know that this is going to be done safely and without damage to things? And with, you know, no liability to the town or its program.
I mean, I think because the other two towns have their own light company, then they're assuming that we also.
Well, it's their, it's their poles, you know.
Yes. But, but also their staff are hanging them. I'm not sure. The DPW should be hanging banners.
I do not. It's not something that we're not. Well, so yeah, what I said is if, if you do decide to go forward at a future meeting, our expectation would be that would, you know, we would reach out to Grobman or Merrimack and say, hey, when you're going to your town, can you come over and help us out? Cause they have the bucket truck, their, their experience at, at doing that. We, we're not sending guys up on ladders like leaning them against poles and hoping that they don't fall and, you know. It would not be a safe situation.
A lot of the brackets and everything, it's too much.
Yeah, I, I also, I just wonder how National Grid is going to feel about.
I would, you know.
A, a, you know, a municipal electric company using their trucks to access the National Grid poles. I mean, certainly the people are skilled, but.
They're busy too.
Right. Yeah, I mean, yeah, there's.
This is a whole step process and they need to, we have to decide if this is an acceptable thing and then they have to get permissions.
Well, I don't know if we should decide if it's acceptable without knowing all the.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to weigh the National Grid.
Right.
But are there any questions that you have that I can convey to the representative from the alliance?
Well, again, a simple question. Once the bracket goes up, are they anticipating to leave that up the next season? Or does the bracket come down each year? I mean. A lot of places they go up and they leave and they pull the sign on off every year. I don't know if National Grid cares about that or we care. Whatever. And then again, does this set a precedent? Cause when you look at the signs in town property bylaw, you're about five, 10, you know, they're looking for exceptions on many levels.
So it's interesting. I'm, I'm not sure the bylaw, I mean, the policy applies because it's not town property. It's National Grid poles.
Which are, which are in the state right away, right?
Right. So I, I mean, I think we can still, you know, ask that they follow our policy, but. Right.
I would assume National Grid owns the air.
But also, I don't know what signs look, what the banners look like.
Yeah, I took a photo.
They were at a high school last year. They had about 30 to 40 of them lined up. Yeah. I mean, it's a nice concept. I think it's great.
It's like when in Habor, if you drink with Habor, they do the military ones, like their pictures on, it's similar.
Yeah, pass that to them. This is an athletic event, but it's a two by four banner.
You keep the pump.
Great, thanks.
All right, that's a good problem.
One thing that's just a curiosity that, because Rebecca was looking at the insurance aspect and. Right now, National Grid is named as additional insured under our insurance policy, quote, as respects the pole decorator.
Really?
So at least on, on that, there's, but we're insured now. It's, yeah, it's just like everything, you know, raises questions and where we haven't dealt with it before, it just.
Okay. All right. So no other questions we want to have answers to before they actually come out?
So one of the questions is though, how are they going to actually affect to the pole, right?
What, what kind of pole are they going to? Just talking about a sleeve so that they can have two banners on one attachment, you know, one facing one way and one facing the other. But totally, we need those details. We won't make a decision. Okay.
Again, it's hanging on a sleeve and the wind, it's not fast enough. It's all over the place. Again, they have to come up with a plan.
Yeah. All right, Ben and F has been delayed until January 9th. I'm G, review and authorize the access agreement for test well drilling in 45 Coffin Street. This has been through legal review and the property owner. It's ready for us to approve. Any questions?
At least our family know pretty good.
The, did you have on the request to remove non-exclusive from paragraph four, was that agreeable? This is, it wasn't in the package since it was the red lines version, but. It seemed like there were just the two, two open issues. One was in paragraph four and the reference to non-exclusive. Now she'll have the non-exclusive right to enter and use to own a property from time to time. And property in this request, they will hold non-exclusive. And then in paragraph, it was. Concerned about use of the phrase to the extent permitted by law in terms of indemnification. And town council that responded to, basically that was, you know, standard language, but that, but if it's a concern for the property owners, I, I don't know that. I don't know that that's, I don't know about that. Those were the only two open items that were.
So they didn't reach consensus on that, the two, the town council and the property owner?
The response was that it's, it's standard language, you know, it's, I'm not a lawyer, but it doesn't seem like it matters. Because the town can't indemnify beyond what it can do by law anyway. So whether that language is in there or not. I don't know that it matters. I think that, you know, they're municipal law firm, they're always looking at the town's interests. So they're. I presume it's putting that limitation in just to acknowledge that there may be limitations on what extent the town can.
I'm saying, is the property owner going to be agreeable to that or they gonna?
They requested, they've expressed concern about it.
Yes, they did.
Say it, Lisa.
Where are we at with it, Lisa?
Well, we're fine with this as long as we're completely held harmless. So if something adverse happens, we don't want to have to be involved in any litigation or any defense or any, anything. And if there are any limitations on the ability of the town, like Angus was saying, to. Provide full indemnification, it would be nice to know about that in advance. And, you know, maybe have a bond, maybe have something else if there is such a chance of liability.
Okay. So I guess we're not quite ready to sign that, that these are.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah.
I think the liability is very, very limited on something like this. This is, should be fairly simple.
Yeah, I mean, the business that is going to be performing the work.
Has insurance.
It has insurance. And. The town has insurance.
And we have insurance too, and we have umbrella insurance. And I don't want our umbrella insurance to be involved in. That, that sort of is where it's at. So. If there's an earthquake and a tree falls and a contractor is paralyzed from the neck down. I don't want to be sued. That's the bottom line.
Okay, so how do we resolve this then?
You know, so, so the language request is in section A, so the town shall, to the extent permitted by law, defend, indemnify and hold harmless owner from and against blah, blah, blah. You know, the request being made is to just strike that language to where we read the town shall defend and indemnify and hold harmless. So if that's agreeable to the board, we can make that change and, and you could sign this. And then the other, the other thing was the, you know, request to delete the non-exclusive language in paragraph four, which. Also seems fine because the town's, you know, the town's, the only party taking advantage of this. Agreement would be the town's contractor, which is already specifically. We have a reference to the agreement. So if those two changes are agreeable, we can just make those strike, you know, we can make those changes, present it to the property owners. And, and if the board voted in condition on those changes, we just present a fee for signature and.
We have to make a motion to approve the agreement with the property owner, the boy at Coffin Street with those two amendments.
Need further discussion on the paper? Okay.
So it's going to freeze hard the next few days. Too bad they can't go out and do it right away.
I know.
Yeah, no, it's not gonna, obviously, you know, we'll be out there drilling my Chris.
So I'll, I'll make those two changes and I'll, I'll. I don't know. Do you want me to have the owner sign first and then the board sign or do you want, I could make it available for the board tomorrow? And you guys could stop it over the weekend and they could do, you know, brought to them signs.
Okay.
Say on Monday.
Right.
Get to work, you know, line up with their contractor.
If you just text us or somebody can text us one.
Sure. Yeah, it'll take two seconds. Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Item H, our request for renewal of retail with the licenses. First one is for GN Enterprises doing business with Wesleybury Pizza Company.
Same question as ever again, just to verify with Jim, has there been no issues reported?
No.
And then a motion to approve the license for the Wesleybury Pizza Company is presented.
Second, but minor discussion. So their, last year, if I recall correctly, they were not actually serving alcohol, but I believe they are resuming. They've planned to, as I understand it.
Well, they have, they have them for a while.
Okay, all right.
So seating and then alcohol.
Okay.
Alcohol, no.
Yeah, okay. And just so you know, Chris, in the future, since you are the licensing board, if there ever was an incident, you have to be told.
I will every year, don't worry.
But additionally, I did, I did speak to the owner. She was considering going to a full alcohol serving license. Because there's alcohol, like vodka, seltzers and things like that. And that's, that's a liquor as opposed to beer and wine, which is a current license. That would take an entire, whole new application process. And I explained that to her and she said, I don't want her to do that. Cause it, it, well, it has to do with identifying, not identifying, but notifying neighbors. There has to be a hearing. It's, it's essentially like getting a brand new license. And so she, she said nothing. That, that in itself is an expense. It's sort of like an extension of why they chose last year to continue to renew, even though they weren't using the license. Because the pain of going through the process of getting a license to begin with is just a lot more expensive than the $100.
All right, my other question there. All right, on the paper.
Hi.
Our next license application is for Wesleybury Food Mart, Packers Store and all our alcoholic beverages.
They're all good too, Jim, right? Yes, we never heard you a thing over here. Make a motion, go ahead, make a motion to approve the retail package, good store license for the. Make a motion, go ahead, make a motion to approve the retail package, good store license for the West New Food Mart is presented.
Right. All there. Bye. Okay. Renewal of class two motor vehicle licenses. New Report Automotive, thirty Main Street. Any questions on this?
Again, I, do people, if they're irritated by complaints with the town clerk? I mean, would an automotive complaint come to your office?
Um, so it would come from my office, but more than likely, it would probably go to the police first. That would be my guess, is somebody feels that they were scammed and they would go file a report with the police. Usually you have to refine it or like that anyways. Um, but they actually aren't selling any cars presently. They have to keep a log. None of them have sold any cars in the last year. Um, and when I go to give them their renewal, I say, can I say books? And they show me an empty page, nine times out of 10. Um, since COVID, I don't think there have been any car sales in West Newbury from what I understand. So there's been no complaints on any of the three, so we can just move right to the. Thank you.
All right, I'm motioning on that one.
Motion to approve for the vehicle license for New Report Automotive presented.
Sorry. All there. Alright, hi. Second license application is for RTI Enterprises, two eighty nine Main Street. Any questions?
Yeah.
I'll pay for it. I think, well, I made too much trade war.
To get to the next.
Yeah, so I'd like to motion.
Um, approve the license for used car dealer, um, for RTI Enterprises as in fact. Second.
All there. Hi. Referring licenses for screen Nacato. By Green.
Yeah, I can motion to, um, approve the used car dealer license, um, for, um, Green Echo Oil, that is included in the package. Second.
All there. Bye. Okay. How about you, Jim?
Right.
Um, item J, consideration of request for ARCA funding for the cost for fencing the Coffin Street Conservation Land.
And this one, I had sent out a brief memo earlier this afternoon, uh, it wasn't in the packet because, uh, we've been, or Butch had been, uh, get quotes, uh, he had sent out solicitations to free perspective fence installers inviting quotes on both materials only and materials and labor. And it had offered to meet with people on site and I, I, I believe did that with at least, uh, two, two of the three. Uh, so we have, uh, the three quotes, I dropped the one copy, I shouldn't have.
Okay, I thought you already.
Yeah, okay, so I'll just hand that around, but.
Okay, sure.
Question before you is.
Wendy, go ahead. I've got your.
Okay, so the question is, uh, do you want to, uh, put ARCA funding toward this? And if so, toward, uh, just materials or materials and labor, my recommendation would be just pay someone to do the whole thing. Uh, while public works is, is able to do it and, and could do it, uh, it's not their bread and butter, so I think, uh, uh, but if you wanted just to materials, that, that would be fine too, but.
It's also the.
I guess my recommendation would be if you're gonna do it, just.
The Green Belt's open to split, are they, and they're, they're done.
They've been, uh.
Non-committal, I, I feel like we should just go ahead and plan on paying for it and if they can contribute some. Well, they, according to Greenbelt, they only agreed to fence in the parking area, which we're not even contemplating doing right now, so.
So they had certain funds allocated in their program.
Well, they don't. Dave River is saying, how much do we need to allocate for the budget for next year?
I mean, last time he was supplying, he would do it and then he backed off.
I know, I know.
It was terrible.
Quite frustrating.
Yeah, we, we really did press them for a number and, uh, they wouldn't provide a number.
I mean, I think it's worth it to me to. I mean, because if we wait.
Due to what?
To go ahead and just assume we're gonna do it and, or we're, assume we can commit ARCA funds to doing it and then work it out with Greenbelt after and.
Okay, but yeah, of course, everything has to, what, what ultimately is going to be done has to be committed by.
Has to be under contract.
Yeah, under contract by December thirty first.
I was gonna, first of all, let's, of the three options. My personal preference is for the park defense option because locust posts, I hate pressure treated, which is the lower price, I'd rather pay a little extra and get the locust, um. Pressure treated isn't always as good as they say, I had a deck that rotted out. I contacted the treatment company and said, oh yeah, for an eight-year period, we had bad pressure treated, so. They actually paid for all the areas.
Yeah.
So you don't want to put a pressure.
On the other hand, I put in a mailbox post twenty-nine years ago.
Yeah, so we know locust is gonna last, so I just think you pay a few extra bucks and.
And Butch had actually contacted Grove and Fence to see if they offer locust and they, they don't. So that was part of why that one came in late this afternoon.
Yeah, so, so Butch, what's your perspective on locust versus pressure treated?
Locust.
That's pretty clear.
Love you boys, thank you.
Well, it's kind of funny because my neighbors who have since moved, but when they put in their fence, they use locust posts and bunching them around it. Not a lot, but, so. Not, not all, you know, only, only a handful, but I, I just expect them to ask for everything.
And also, I gotta say, Butch, it depends how you put them in, I know some people sink in the concrete, the water sits and rots and you put them in stone and don't.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah.
I want a drink. They're running low. I know that I can do concrete up there.
Yeah.
I was gonna make the motion to go for forty-six hundred and sixty dollars, which was about half the money. Cause then the transmittal, I don't have it with me here, the ethics county was, they gave two options for how they could pay, right? They, they, they had the whole thing on the signage summary here, they were talking about the labor and the materials, I don't have that part of the packet with me, I don't know where I saw that.
Uh, yes, uh, EJ, uh, I don't know, I did not put page numbers, but I can pull, pull it up on the, uh.
Right, somewhere. And they, they were basically saying, we got two options, we can do the fencing here, we can do this and split it. So I'm thinking they, they were engaged on splitting the cost. Yeah, here we go, thank you. Anything on cost sharing? Or Greenbelt is responsible, the parking, the township, oh, well, they'll say they cover the parking area, so.
But we're, we're not even planning.
Right, but what's that cost? Whatever that was, they should be able to allocate towards.
Oh, so that's twenty by twenty-four is the parking area, so. Yeah, I, can't we just authorize the entire amount and then figure this out with Greenbelt? We're not gonna resolve this tonight, so we don't have any input from Greenbelt. We don't have firm ethical.
If, if the board chose to do that, you, you could do that for the reason that, uh, the last, at the last meeting where, uh, with the ARCA votes, one of the votes specifically for the fire truck was inclusive of anything that is allocated but underspent. So let's say you allocate just eight thousand dollars and let's say six thousand, that's a being spent, that two thousand could be put toward the fire truck.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve. I'll call it ninety-four hundred dollars. To put in the fencing with the locust park fence from ARCA funding. The strong suggestion that Essex County Greenbelt participated in significant share of costs.
So if we do ninety-four hundred dollars in the total, does that include tax owner?
The municipality, I don't pay taxes.
Oh, right, right, good point. Um, so if, if we do ninety-four hundred dollars and it actually is only ninety-three nineteen, but this has to be under contract.
The extra eighty-one cents goes back to the.
Eighty-eighty-one bucks. Okay, so.
Yeah, we would be able to go to the, the fire truck.
Oh, oh, okay, this wasn't sure based on the way the timing of the song.
I mean, I might, I might suggest just use these, since we have.
And you know what? You should not be working on this on eighty-one dollars while you're on the case.
Well, part of why, is, you know, part of why we don't want to leave it there on the table is philosophical, but also practical. We don't want to be kind of check the treasury.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah. US Treasury, by the way.
Yeah.
Was second ever?
Yeah, sorry.
Right. Any further discussion?
So, so, I mean, how about the idea of just ninety-three nineteen? Just, just so there's not some.
Yeah, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't see the point, we have a hard quote, so.
That is a written quote?
It is a written quote, yeah. All, all of these are written quotes, yeah.
Okay, all right, all there. All right. Um, before we leave this, Angus, I just emailed you the, um, layout of the fence, are you able to pull that up?
I am, yeah.
I just wanna, um, Butch and I looked at it and I just have one question for the board on one of the property boundaries.
Just take a second.
Yeah, I, I had a point I wanted to make, and we're saying the same thing, if you're thinking about. Not time, but.
So the way I had proposed it is to have the northern, um, property line kind of cut over to the parking space rather than run on the property border. And I'm wondering, you know, in light of Chris's concerns about the fact that that area is approaching, I'm wondering if we should just say the fence is gonna go on the property border and that will make it very visual to them.
Right, so, so, so just, um, yeah, my, my, my question was, that's what, that's what you said in the letter you wrote.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but what was shown on the diagram, on the drawing that we had previously seen, it was inset about ten feet or so.
Yeah, that was a prior iteration.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, so, so I understand, I don't object to that at all, but understand that, um, the fence now will basically split their, um, utility pedestals. Um, there are three pedestals there, you know, uh, pow, you know, National Grid, um, cable and, um, you know, both Comcast and, and, uh, Verizon, I guess.
That's fine, still they have property.
Right, I don't disagree, I just wanted to understand.
I was just suggesting it goes to the, where it's landscaped and clear, not go right through that.
Oh, right, right, right to the mulch.
I mean, that's, I mean, I think it makes it clear and they're only losing a very small a, area of lawn, and I just think it makes the point that this is town property. I, I don't know that we could run a fence through where they have the utilities. I mean, that's a separate issue, but in terms of fencing, I just want to make sure we're in alignment so that Butch can work with the contractor to.
My, my other question would be on the pile property, they said they wanted twenty feet, but that's sixty-five.
Yeah, we went out there and it's not twenty feet, that was a, not a great estimate.
Underestimating.
Yeah. So I, Butch, I located the stone wall and it's, you know, roughly maybe sixty to eighty feet to the stone wall.
Okay.
Butch.
And if you zoom out a little bit, you can see the little jog. Yeah. I have, uh, property, uh, maps and, uh, there is no jog, it's a straight.
Oh, so this is the mine map, uh.
Yeah, the mine map is different.
Yeah, because we couldn't find it on the ground.
Yep, it's a, it's a straight line.
This, this dog here?
Yeah.
That one, right there.
Well, that's interesting, there, some background that, um, I think, Rick, you would have been on the board, I don't know if anyone else was, but one, one, one of the many quirks of this issue is when we, when this came up, uh, I don't know, probably four years ago, and we were looking at it closely with the land acquisition. Uh, it, it became very clear in looking at the mine map data layer that it was not accurate. And when you look at it side by side with the actual definitive subdivision plan, it was, uh, it was basically the L was further north, where it was more like a, it wa, it wasn't quite centered, but it was more centered than what it's. And we, we found the definitive subdivision plan and we actually had a survey go out and, so this, this, this portion of the L is survey accurate, but we didn't, we didn't include this, so you're, you're telling me that's inaccurate as well? Is that, it's a process to go through with MTC to get these maps updated?
The engineer map, I was looking at it, it goes straight across like he says.
Yeah, that's, that's, I, I got mine maps from, um, uh, water help.
Okay.
That's who I got mine from and it shows a straight line with no jog.
This is from the approved subdivision plan, it was in the packet with one of the letters.
Yep.
So. Well, these still don't leave the fencing, that's a difference.
But that is, that is something that I want to add to our list of, uh, map corrections.
Yeah, well, I suppose somewhere there must be a, a drawing that shows whatever monumentation there is, you know, with whatever, um,
Accurate.
Boundary delineation there is and, 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 uh, you know, if there's a stone wall there, you know, typically or frequently somewhere on the stone wall could be a drilled hole or something like that in the wall.
There is.
Um, there is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Butch drilled it this afternoon.
Been out there a few times.
Yeah, okay. Um, so, you know, my, I guess my question is that if we put up a fence, you know, so there's this question about landscaping and utilities on town land and how do we deal with that long-term and, and, um, you know, if we, if we put up a fence, we've now incurred later costs. I almost think we had to hold off a little while before we actually do the work. Um, I mean, there's no need to do the work until put the fence in until the, um, the parking is actually installed, right?
Just split real fence if you had to move the fence.
Yeah, but, but it's, somebody has to do the work and then they have to do it again if, if we're gonna move it later.
But you, you can find the property line out there from the stone wall.
It's marked, it's marked.
Yeah, so.
It's all marked.
Yeah, and I thi, I think there's a separate issue of working with these two butters and what we'll do, but I just, if we're talking about the fencing, I just want to make sure.
You get that, and I think Greenbelt is supposed to, they'll talk about the, uh, clearing of the brush man here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So all that's.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I just, in the context of that, uh, the documentation from two thousand six, two thousand seven that you sent to us.
Interesting.
It's just, I don't know, it is.
Yeah, yeah, no, it just changes perspective a little bit and, and, um, you know, so previous owner, original owner was put on notice and showed not to do anything and then sold the property and representing something and now the town is taking, you know, it's getting the short end of the stick. And, and, and at the same time, there's pushback about us even, the town even using its land, um, from the butters, so. I, I don't know, I'm.
Yeah, we have some work.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just feeling more and more, um, like we're being, you know, somebody's trying to, uh, you know, trying to hold us hostage.
Well, I think of this, you know, once we get through the fencing, if we send the letter to the property owners, if they're prudent people, I would relocate those utilities as soon as I could because that's a, if you're gonna sell your house, now you've been noticed.
Right.
I wouldn't want to buy that.
Right.
I'd send them a certified letter with that at some point, you know, that's a project for next year. I guess we'll do that in a week. I almost threw the pot too much, but I'm done.
Definitely we need to pick their event in January because I feel like we need to explain to them why we're putting the fence in there.
And, and make them aware of that prior correspondence.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a piece of beauty, that, that is a brain.
A piece of beauty.
Oh, it's in, don't look at that.
All right.
So, no, last question.
Actually, Butch.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Um, and talking with these fence contractors, I told them that the installation wouldn't be done till the end of, uh, late spring, early summer.
Okay.
To give us time to figure this out.
I think that's good also because, because part of the, you know, part of why this, we're dealing with this now instead of two years ago, is, is because of the, the intent is that this is kind of formally opened when the trails are actually open and it's going through ConCon right now for the notice of the tax of the trail. So until, until Greenbelt has the permission to put in the board blocks they proposed, it just doesn't, you know, the, the goal all along has been that it proceed in, in coordination. So I can't imagine Greenbelt's gonna be doing work on their trails till spring, summer anyway, and I think for a lot of reasons, it makes sense to just you know, coordinate the timing of that work.
Yeah.
Uh, so you don't have, you know, some fenced area to nowhere, no.
Last question for me on this one. Um, lot number eight, which should be the one at the top of the document. Somewhere in one of the correspondences that I was reading today mentioned it obtained a lot of its frontage from.
Right, yeah.
The town's unconstructed right away.
Right.
You've got other properties that have been out of that issue. Ilse Lee?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
What's the difference?
In terms of someone's right to improve?
No, why do we hold, why does Ilse Lee held a different standard? These people built with unconstructed frontage. Ilse Lee Hill, they would totally have to build.
Wait, who, who built off unconstructed frontage?
A lot of the north, correct?
Yeah. Oh, you're saying that this, uh.
This one's received the benefit of using frontage, it's not constructed, whereas Ilse Lee Hill is not being afforded that. The way one of the memos, and now I don't have it with me, it stated, well, you can look at it, there's not a whole lot of frontage on the radius of this, it obviously extends down into this right away, it's not constructed. Just a question that pertains to another issue that they saw a conflict at least from.
I, I don't think it should have been. I mean, now that you make that point, I don't think it should have been, that's.
Okay.
But, but I, I will say that with, with Ilse Lee, one of the things that came up during that process was the zoning bylaw had changed where the definition of frontage prior to the amendment, which happened many years ago. Refer to frontage on a street or a public street. The bylaw now says and has for, for many years, a constructed street. Uh, so this, this subdivision happened. Uh, so this, this subdivision happened in the, what, late nineties or early two thousands, so.
Twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, so maybe that the, you know, maybe they changed the bylaw language exactly for reasons like this, you know, those are loophole.
Yeah, good thing. Yes, thank you.
But I don't know that, that I'm just speculating, but it'd be, it'd be interesting to look back on when that bylaw was amended. Uh, because as a, you know, former town planner, it, it shouldn't have, you know, it's not.
It was probably amended right after the master plan because it went through, did all the zoning and the subdivision regs and methodically sets. It would have been right after that, so it makes time reasonably.
Well, plus there was, um, I don't remember that, you probably remember more of the detail, but, you know, there was a lawsuit or two, um, regarding this particular subdivision and, and there were, there were multiple issues on it. Yeah, we don't need to.
Yeah, re-try.
Butch, one final question, how many feet did you, did you base it on, four hundred?
I came from the, uh, this exact plan, I call them, it's within, like, you know, for that amount of footage.
Okay, we, I mean, if we need to add a bit more than you give or something, I'm sure we could absorb the cost that we need to do. Okay, great.
The eighty-one dollars I had, I would have done.
Yeah? All right, that's it, right? Moving on?
We need to vote.
I thought we voted.
Uh, yeah, they, yeah, they did.
Oh, I, I.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, all right, thank you, Butch.
We're all done.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, sorry to keep you.
Don't roll.
Yeah, speaking, I'm sorry to keep you so long, it just occurred to me, why are you two? I just didn't read far enough down the agenda for you to remember, no, um, item K. Request for appointment to the board and registrar, no, that's not it, is it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so you guys have received response back from the Republican Town Committee
Mm-hmm.
uh, regarding, uh, three applicants, uh, for appointment. It's up to the board to do one, two things, you can choose tonight, uh, or you can ask all the applicants to come in.
And we're just choosing one?
Just choosing one, yeah, um, and then just background on the three candidates from an elections perspective. Um, Lisa's worked as, uh, uh, election worker for the town. I've been here a couple of years before as well with Mike. Um, Sharon's been a warden clerk poll worker, I think since the early two thousands uh, for the town, probably before that when her kids were younger. Um, and then, uh, I have that pleasure of working with, uh, Ms. Divine, but, uh, she's the better.
Would you want to say anything, Lisa?
Um, not really, not yet, that's fine, just interested in the position and waiting your approval and decision.
Okay, great. Are you, do you have any thoughts on this?
Um, I, I don't, I don't know Sharon Plummer, I think she's an educated decision, it'd be good to know. Just, you know, she would appear, um.
They're going to send us a letter of why they're interested in what their qualifications was Jim, just gave us that, just a little.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so you.
Do you have a reference or anything?
I think we just, just applied Lisa, I mean, she's here, were the other people made aware that we were, I think it's a conversation.
No.
Yeah, last, well, last, uh, Rich, did you, did the Republican Town Committee?
No, I, I just talked to Max and asked him when it was going to be on the, uh, the agenda.
Yeah, clearly reacting to the letter, that's, that's it, that's all it was.
All right, so you would go right away?
I, I vote on one, I don't know if any, you know.
That's fine, I'm just confirming you.
Yeah, I, um, matter of fact, six, I just would like to know who, who we're choosing between.
You don't know the other, you don't know the other two people?
Um, uh, well, I, I, I know of one of them.
Sure.
And, uh.
Yeah, I'd like to meet Sharon, Sharon, Sharon Plummer, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, she's acted.
I probably hate her by face, but I don't.
She's acted as warden, uh, some of the voting.
Yeah.
Um, elections and, you know, I've worked right alongside of her.
Yeah.
With, you know, Max and Jim and, long time.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm, you know, I, I, I'm embarrassed to say, I just, I, I'm sure I never faced, but, but I've never been, never.
Being by.
Yeah.
To have them come in.
Okay. I'm sorry to have you sit through all that. Nothing. Okay.
So I, actually, I'll ask, uh, Rich, since you're here, so this is a letter, obviously, from the Republican Town Committee, uh, bringing forward three candidates. Are, did, I assume they all three did express interest to the committee in serving in this role?
Um, Christie and Lisa did to the committee. Um, Sharon, we've talked to Jim and he is, has, uh, got her interest from that. We, we, I, I don't know Sharon, uh, she's never been to a Republican Town Committee meeting that I know of. Um, but that's not required to.
No, but that's good information also, that's, that's what.
I, I think we should just vote, I mean.
So, just so you know, Board of Registitors also serves like finance committee, so unfortunately Lisa does serve on the Town Committee now. That would exclude her from serving on the Town Committee as well.
Oh, I have a point on that. Um, our executive, uh, director, Tracy Watson, um, has served in, over in An, North Andover. And she said that there is someone there who is a board, on the Board of Registitors and is also on their housing authority.
Okay, I, I'm.
So it's not a conflict?
Well, I'm, I'm understanding what the regulations are in the state.
But it, it, it's an independent authority and I can see if it's on the ballot that it would pre, you know, preclude. But she's, she's a governor's appointee. Though I think in that case, she can continue as the government's appointee. I would bet she cannot run for the office, uh, in an election. And, you know, if it were a town position, she couldn't serve, but as an independent authority.
Excellent, I don't want it up, Jim.
Yeah.
I think we need clarification on that too, so I'm not gonna.
Okay. So, um, can you look up to that and answer?
So do you want all of the show, do you want letters, do you want?
Either or. Want to show up or a letter?
Right.
So what, I'm just curious, what would you make the decision based on their interest in serving or, or their experience?
Yeah, I mean, I, not that he should be representing another person, but she's never been to that meeting, that's kind of significant.
Yeah.
Uh, but I also need, I wouldn't have a problem with your motion right now, except for the lack of clarity on.
So can we make that motion pending con- confirmation from the town clerk?
Sure, you make the motion off second.
All right, I move to appoint Lisa Mingo to Engate Middle Street as the, um, Republican designated for the West Newbury Board of Registitors. Pending confirmation by the town clerk that it is appropriate to continue to serve on the housing authority. I'll do it.
I'll second that.
All right.
Okay, so my discussion, um, Felisa, if, if you can't be on vote, would, would you then resign from the housing authority?
Um, I'd, I'd like to just consider it a little bit before I answer that.
Okay.
So what, once we get a clarification on that, we can, you know, let you know and then, uh, she just wouldn't get sworn in until you've made a decision, if, if the answer is that there's, uh, yeah.
And how many people is the housing authority down right now?
Uh, one, I just, Gary is, is.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't care. The, the, the elected position was still there already.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay, bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the long wait. Nothing better to do on a Thursday night.
Before Christmas.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night, thank you.
All right, item L, request for approval of draft financial policies. These two policies have been in the works for a while, I think it'd be great if we could finalize these.
Yeah, I looked back through, uh, it's been equal in twenty twenty-three, there's been really a question on like one section of one of the policies and, uh, you know, I went back and, uh, Jenny could actually made some changes in the weeks after that meeting. And then it just hadn't gotten back on the agenda, so, um, you know, I think, uh, we benefit from having written policies on both of these. And, uh, if we find improvements, we can always change them, but I would, I would like to get something on the books.
You want to vote them separately or independently?
Uh, there are two separate policies, so I would say two different votes.
Make a motion where you approve the procurement policy as presented.
Second. Any questions or discussions in the minutes? All the big ones, bye, bye. On the next one, Angus, the conflict of interest, who is the town's ethics liaison? That's you, Jim, okay.
There's, one thing we did in, in my last job was, uh, and it was, it set out from the town, uh, town ordinance was, uh, um, every year I sent around a disclosure to each of the seven members of the town council uh, for any entities that, um, the town did business with above a certain dollar threshold. And they had to disclose in writing if they had had any business relationships and, um, uh, that was something that had been on the books for years before I started, they really haven't done it, but, but we did it and, um, it was really helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that, that, that wasn't, I will qualify that to say, in, in my last town, the elected council was the contract awarding authority for everything over a hundred thousand dollars. So they actually had a, a more hands-on role within their selection, so I think that type of disclosure order is for.
Yeah. So make a motion to approve the procurement conflict of interest following as he has presented.
Um, second, but I have a question. Who? Is it, is the, um, the conflict, what's, what's the title of the conflict officer, what town, what's the exact, where is that in here again?
Town Ethics Liaison.
Yeah, Town, Town Ethics Liaison. Is that by default town clerk or is that an appointed, are, are you appointed to that? Did, did we appoint you as that? I, I, I don't, I don't.
And no, I, I do not believe it's a separate appointment from you guys, but the town clerk serves as the state liaison for the ethics.
Yeah, okay, by default, that's part of, that's by definition, okay, thanks.
Um, on the top of the second page, in item one, there's just an S missing from Alice. Uh, next page.
Town Ethics Liaison.
Yeah. Top, very top of the page.
Oh, I see, yeah. And actually, oh, they put the S in liaison.
We don't, we don't, we only have one.
They, they put, they, they put an extra S in liaison, so they must have, so the S is there.
Well.
But is that liaison?
I can catch this.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, two down, how many to go?
Uh, that's, you know, we're down probably, I think, six or seven.
Yeah, all right. Okay, um, item N, request to authorize early closures of the town offices and library on twelve twenty-four and the library on twelve thirty-one, any questions on this?
No, I make a motion that we, um, authorize early closures of the town offices and library in twelve twenty-four and the library in twelve thirty-one.
As noted in the.
Yeah.
How many is that?
Yeah.
Right, second, all in favor?
All right.
There's a discussion.
Yeah, did you want to discuss it? Chris?
No.
Oh.
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
Okay.
You sure?
All right.
Yeah.
Just trying to move this.
All right, all in favor? Bye, bye, okay.
Did you have a day?
No, I, I watched, uh, Christmas Story there, but he's a screwed one, I guess.
I guess this. Josie Stapper, it's supposed to be a line.
Preferable to the Muppets.
It's supposed to be really good.
Michael King?
No, he, he went into it and said, I'm going to play this as if I'm working with all humans, stage play.
Yeah.
It was one of the best performances.
I heard that, really good.
You'll ever see.
It's a good movie, the Muppets version of Christmas, it's a, I've never seen.
Mike, Michael King.
I'm told.
Max, the Muppets Christmas Story.
Interesting.
Do you?
All right, item N, request for approval of amendments to the FY twenty-five salary and wage schedule. Um, we want to just this, uh, discuss this generally or just defer to executive session and then open?
Uh, well, yeah, uh, I think the latter would be, would be rather better advice, but.
Okay, so then we will, um, return to this after the close of executive session. All right, minutes.
I, uh.
Page one.
Yeah, I, I went through the December fifth and saw nothing that I had an issue with.
Okay.
Is that motion?
No, I have.
I knew everyone who would have something.
Um, item C, under Town Manager Updates, item C, um, I don't understand this. I was talking about the fiscal impact study, it's going to be a factor in decisions made at an upcoming planning board meeting, sort of weight is expected. I'm just going to.
It would soon be, I think that's referring to the draft, the fiscal impact study would soon be available. So.
Soon be available? I think you, actually, I, I think probably what it was to do with was, I might have said something like, right now, the scope contemplates studying traffic at two locations. If at the planning board meeting they decide to narrow to one location, we would ref, we would refine the scope before we issued it. I did, I remember saying something about that.
Yeah.
Um, that we weren't going to actually finalize the scope and know after the planning board meeting because we needed to know if they were being asked to study one or both sites. So I think the, the wording is a little awkward, but I think that was the intent.
Okay, is there a way to clarify or do you think it's?
Uh, yeah, I think this traffic study scope has not been finalized and, um, and I mean, I would just say, and it is expected to be finalized following next Tuesday's planning board, so like, for showing, I mean, I think something like that.
Yeah.
You could even say, you know, regarding whether one or both prospective sites would be evaluated.
Um, under, on the next page, item D, at the top of the page, and then the font, um, discussion. The, the whole focus of, of this is that the MilCon committee was moving ahead as expected and open space peel off. And this makes it sound like open space is doing the wrong thing instead of being part of a wire system. So I just want to clarify that, if I send you a sentence to clarify, are you guys all right voting on that? If you don't have the exact wording, I just want to clarify.
Yeah, I'll follow it.
Yeah, okay.
I know you might go wrong, but we'll take a chance.
It says, and that Lisa instead of Gresen.
Yeah.
Gresen.
Jackie's brother.
It's also on the, uh, participation at the meeting, Jim, if you can do it, I have, uh, a little cert.
Maybe it's, uh, just Max sent me another one. I don't think it's in this one. It said unidentified man spoke, that was John Saka, so that would be, I think, I'll cover it, so. He identified, he had been on the town board and none of that identified man. I'll correct that before it gets better.
That, that is one of Max's favorite requests, if there's someone from a public state.
Do the, I'll try to do better than that.
Sometimes the shared screen is up and it's not able.
Yeah. The tax classification hearing, I don't think it's accurate, the last sentence, second last sentence, that we can expect an estimated three point one eight percent increase, I think that was the median.
What's the overall for the town?
Yes, yeah.
It is three point one eight? I thought it was two point eight, okay.
Now, of course, you, you.
Three point.
That up here, yes.
Three point one eight percent in their tax bill, that's the.
The average, the average.
But it doesn't say average, it just says they can expect.
I know, it's.
So if it's average, let's just insert that word, so it.
So, yeah, can, homeowners can.
Like overall increase for the town is three point eight, yeah.
Right, but that's not what the homeowners are expecting in their town.
I'm getting a lovely twelve point six.
Yeah. So just clarify that sentence.
So is it average or is it overall?
The overall for the town.
But that, that's not, so the sentence is about what homeowners can expect in our tax bill.
Yeah, but that's, you're correct, they cannot expect that.
Okay, so should we just believe that?
Yeah.
Another, another misconception that a lot of people have is they, they think that the tax hearing, the select board is voting the tax rate. You're not, you're knowing based on what we expect the tax rate will be, but until B O R certifies it's not, you know, it's.
Uh, on B, uh, third sentence, the off-street parking made by prior boards, it was just one board. I mean, that was just a single vote, right, you know, street parking.
Uh-huh, yeah, twenty seventeen.
And the fence does not shield from nearby homeowners, couple more sentences down. It would, I would just say it would mark the property line of nearby homeowners. Next page on item. Next page on item E. This is the hardship word of the verb. I would just like to add a sentence after the end saying that Reed agreed to consolidate her home and other comments received and draft a cover letter for the board and town manager review.
Fantastic, good job, Laura.
So, consolidate comments, and.
And draw a cover letter for.
And draft a cover letter for the board and town manager review.
Make the law, approve the minutes of December 5th as an amendment.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, any comments or corrections on December 12th, the tax classification hearing?
Four-minute meeting.
Where is awesome? Took us longer to get started or to meet.
I literally wrote the minutes in the meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December 12th.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. General discussion, municipal energy manager grant. Rick, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so this is a grant that's, well, under MassAid, it's. I assume it's, the funding is coming from fees collected by the utility that are distributed by MassAid, because that's essentially where the funding, I think, possibly 100% of the funding from MassAid comes from there. But, so there, I don't recall the exact amount of money available, but the focus really is expected to be on schools. You know, I've given it some thought after we talked about it the last, was it the last meeting, I guess? And, yeah, there's complication with trying to do something that's, you know, with a shared position or regionalized. So I'm, I'm, you know, I guess, I'm skeptical that we can make this work in the time, you know, that we can figure out all the details that we would be comfortable with applying by January 31st. You know, working with the other two communities, you know, or, I'm assuming other two communities because I heard something from both NUP and from, somebody, somebody new reports started an email thread that included Ames Hury and me and, you know, and NUP report. And, you know, it just doesn't seem likely that we would be able to pull that together in time. However, the topic of an energy manager is not a dead issue because also included in that thread is somebody from NUPC. And NUPC, it turns out, is actively discussing the possibility of they creating an energy manager position available to municipalities. Like, you know, small municipalities that don't have somebody that's really not well-defined at this point. I have a copy of a job description by another regional, from another regional agency. It's, I'm not sure if I can tell you the name, but the. Northern Middlesex Regional Energy Manager from. I'm not sure of all the communities that are involved, but this is.
It includes Westward and Lowell and.
Yeah, 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 exactly, which communities that you're already well-familiar with.
Yeah, I worked with NUC for.
Right, right. So, so there's, and this is what I told you earlier, I was going to try to get something out to you today, but I just was trying to get, I was still getting anything else. But, you know, it's a fairly extensive job description. I don't know if they're currently staffed or if they're in the process of becoming staffed, but there's clearly a lot of thought went into putting together this description. And so I don't really have anything more to say about the grant. I don't think it's for us at this point in time. I just don't think we have the bandwidth to try to pull it together and, you know, require two other communities to.
And why would we partner with them relative to Merrimack and Grohlman if it is school-focused? Is that right?
Yeah, so there has been no discussion with Merrimack or Grohlman. And doesn't mean we couldn't, but, you know, quite honestly, I didn't initiate the discussion. You know, if somebody came to me, I don't know where Merrimack or Grohlman are in that case. And, yeah, I mean, the fact that we, you know, share a regional district with Merrimack and Grohlman makes sense. I, quite honestly, my assumption was that it would be a hard push-up pill to get Merrimack and/or Grohlman involved and interested and, you know, it won't be a straightforward process. And if there was, were other municipalities nearby that were already primed and thinking about and looking at it, you know, the process, that process was already started.
My, I mean, my concern would be establishing a position that's funded by a grant. You know, that might happen when the grant goes away.
Right.
I like the concept of Merrimack Valley Planning doing it, but it seemed like a real synergy with them and then.
Right, you know, they already have, I mean, they've really upped their game, I think. And, you know, they're really focusing on a broad suite of environmental planning issues right now. And, yeah, but on the other hand, you know, if they have one person on staff, how is one person going to support it? How many communities is one person going to try to support? Because it seems to me that you, to do the job effectively, you need, as an energy manager, you know, you need intimate knowledge of the, of the facilities, all equipment that a town has or municipality has. And you also need to understand the dynamic and the organization and, and know the people enough to be able to be in person with them. So I'm not sure how it works.
Okay.
There are other potential funding sources. And I think we all heard the discussion the other day with Colonial Power. You know, there's, you know, there's, you know, one tenth of a penny charge that, you know, I don't know what you would call it, so I'll just call it a charge that would be added to municipal aggregation pricing. And doing some rough math, that comes out to about $7,200 for that, our town, that would come out somewhere in the range of $7,200 a year. Which, you know, wouldn't be sufficient to fund a position, but we have to figure out exactly really the way we want to go supposedly, based on what Colonial said, Mark Capadano insisted. Well, there, you know, DPU is never going to look at that. But if it, if you're really not supposed to do it, then you shouldn't do it. You recall that?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I have gone back and looked at the exact wording, but, you know, if it says that, you know, if the, some were in, I don't know, in the legislation or a regulation, but if there is a statement that the funds should only be used to support the administrative costs of municipal aggregation. You know, is that legit or not, to use it for something else for an energy manager? I mean, that would be one of the responsibilities of an energy manager, but I don't know how you document how much is.
Seems to me we have to establish that we need it and how many hours we need before we start looking at funding.
Right, okay, and that's, again, that's something that I had hoped to, you know, explain some of the functions, you know, what I can readily identify that a person would do.
Can you continue?
Yeah, Jim did just, you know, find that while we were talking, so he sent me the link to the NIMCO.
Okay.
One, so.
Great.
Yeah, I had talked to.
So, okay, so you really do NIMCO.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Are you still on Zoom?
No, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Just want to make sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure Adam would call us. All right.
Yeah, I definitely told Rick if there's, if there's functions that need to be performed that aren't currently part of his own job description and, you know, there's things that are within capability or could be trained, I definitely want to, we want to provide a level of service that we can. And I want to, you know, explore that at least initially to see if there's, you know, more support or more, you know, more that can be done, so.
It'll be good opportunities for staff development too, you know, if they're interested in wanting something new. All right, let's see, draft, leaving guidelines, this is for discussion. I mean, this is still.
I think, yeah, Sam is so honest. He's, you know, and I know his organization with building commissioners is going to be putting in comments. He's been very, very hands-on, you know, liaising with the state office. So I think we're very well represented. I doubt that we want to auto-submit comments, but I did just want to make you aware, it's a comment period, I wouldn't recommend.
Leaving up the Sam.
Yeah, and he keeps us briefed in terms of, you know, the town planner, conservation agent, health, and so forth, at those huddles that we have. He's, he gives us pretty much every, every meeting or two, he's got substantive updates. And you're probably aware, he'd done a pretty detailed presentation with the planning board about four or six weeks ago, so I think we're very well represented on that. I just wanted to make you aware, maybe off-chance that you want to jump in.
Well, not taking that one.
Yeah.
All right, what about item C, the Whittier? I mean, did you meet with? Is this an appropriate time?
No, it's great, it's exactly, yeah, perfect time.
I don't want to talk about that, do you? You mean the SOI?
No, no, I didn't meet you on Monday with Superintendent.
She was concerned that there may have been comments that we had said that she was less than honest on a previous project. And I told her, I didn't say she was dishonest. I didn't think the process was fair to the communities. And I pointed out that she and Karen were here for one meeting and then a certain timeframe later, they're saying you have to vote this thing in the middle of the winter in the darkness of night, and I didn't appreciate that. And she couldn't give me a specific comment, so I don't, if somebody said something, I don't know what that was.
Did she think specifically you said it or somebody?
Thought that it was either Angus or I at that meeting with.
With me, yeah.
So I don't know what he communicated.
At the meeting here?
Yeah, no, the meeting that we had. A day time meeting with just the four of us, I think it was.
Yeah, we were arguing.
Okay.
So I told her, you know, she was straight out lying, would call up and said that to her, but I don't have any specific unless she did. So then we did get into this MSBA letter. And I said, you know, I thought, and we'll back up, that's where, I did say, that email blast that they sent out that had the story from Dave Rogers in the paper, it said, now, you didn't write that, but that is inaccurate. We didn't vote to go forward with a new school. And pushing that forward, I thought was not fully transparent.
What is she saying?
She hadn't seen it, she looked into it.
So do you feel she took in your comments or your critiques on the process, that you just?
Yeah, I think she's very much trying to do that. We, the conversation, that was the first three minutes of the conversation, and then it was about another hour about, I mean, this letter is pretty significant. I mean, this is, you know, the number one thing is, each of the 11 communities has to sign it, you know, that we can amend the agreements needed.
Right, right.
And she pointed out, that's basically number one. Without that, MSBA is saying no. So she now has to go and, and I said, we've got one obstacle, and that's Belinda Barrett. You've got to deal with her and work through that because then she understands, Maureen understands, that if Havel does not agree to this entire process, that Whittier is going to be gone. And, you know, the community's not going to be funding anything, this is your shot.
It's kind of interesting. I, you know, I see that Havel is putting themselves at risk by refusing to work with the other community, by saying, no, it has to be by the rules that we want it to be. And because Whittier is going to go nowhere, and Havel receives more benefit than any other community by a huge margin.
So we're trying to figure out who can enlighten her to that.
Yeah, but there, yeah, there are a couple of things here that, that were. But we, I don't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead, yeah, there's a lot of.
Yeah, Angus, you know, it says, school building committee of the district must provide a letter signed by the chief executive officer of each member community of the regional school district, evidencing each of the 11 member communities support their community representation on the school building committee.
Yeah.
We don't currently have representation, right? Because Chair resigned, right?
And he actually, it was stated at the joint meeting that he resigned. When we, I had asked him after that to follow up with, and talk to, to talk about the process to solicit. And it turns out that was misstated. What he had said, he's not going to seek reappointment. So he is serving out his term.
Which is like.
Yeah, no, your point is not, it doesn't really change your point because soon enough, we will not, you know, that position will have to.
Well, to me, there's a certain irony here.
Taken as of today, because I think we all came away from that regional meeting thinking he had stepped down.
Right.
When is the, when is he?
March 31st, 2025. Okay, so not that far off. So, but it's, but it's, but it's, you know, it's, it's ironic and troubling that the appointment is by the school committee, you know, not by the town. And, and I don't, I don't recall, is that in the, is that in the Whittier regional agreement or is that in the Penntucket regional agreement? In the Whittier.
I mean, I would like to send a letter to the school committee asking them to allow us to select somebody. I mean, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Do you have time for not reading everything?
I'm just going to write a letter.
Lucky being around.
Oh, no, I'm not going to read it around. No, but I, I mean, that's, that's one of the things we identified that should be changed about the agreement, right?
Oh, yes, that was a futile, yeah, a lot of towns are from.
So do you.
Another comment on this, with Rick's comment though, it doesn't necessarily mean that your Whittier rep is on that building committee. It could be somebody from the town here.
Right.
You know, it could be, that's what they're saying, you have to agree on who that person is. Because I think a lot of the communities felt like they didn't have fair representation the last go-round. So the state caught on to that, and then we have to sign up and say, yes, that's we agree with. So whoever that is, it might not be whoever that rep is.
Oh, okay, I didn't catch that.
Yeah, it's community representation on the school building committee, which is separate from.
Which is my suggestion at that point in time, it should be someone selected.
That would be you. You're a school guy.
You're a brick. Look right at you.
You didn't see the mirror?
Be available that day, whatever it is.
All right, anything else in this letter we're going to?
Well, I just, also, there's another thing that talks about amendments, you know, another paragraph. You know, district will be required to resolve any potential amendments to the vocational regional school district agreement regarding any issues, including but not limited to the level of participation from each member community and each member's appointment or apportionment of capital cost per MSBA board approving a recommendation for a program to be met. So, clearly, MSBA saw the issues that were going on here. Again, that's, you know, that's 100% a response to that.
And they've accommodated Whittier by letting him jump the line.
Right.
Too, so that's why they're being very straightforward.
Yeah.
The other thing sort of all that made, basically with all the money they spent last time, 100% of the cost of the feasibility study, you're going to go on by the district now.
Yeah, yeah.
That wasn't too.
Yeah, you caught that?
Yeah. It's only mine, you know.
But, I mean, I think all of the things that we were pushing for, we now have the framework.
Yeah, MSBA gets it.
Yeah, which is, I mean, to me, that's, that's really.
Just another slight concern, Rowley did sign on to this concept, and they could be also problematic. I would think if the funding formula got changed, maybe with a two-step process, it might help them see it a little clearer, I don't know.
One minute.
I think a similar process took place in. Where they amended the agreement first, which allowed anyone to get out. While we're getting this, good as it were.
Yeah.
And that, there have been comments about that too, so. There's economics involved in that, not insignificant.
Right.
If you leave.
Yeah.
All right.
It was just kind of, I don't know if you noticed, there's a schedule that, you know, recommended invitation for commencement of a. It was just kinda, I don't know if you noticed, there's a schedule that, you know, recommended invitation for commencement of eligibility purely on August twenty twenty five. Um, there, all three of those are regional districts, I'm wondering. Isn't. Although that could be pointed at. There are all different types of projects.
Yeah.
Um, the Shawshing, for example, is just, is building a new building in addition to what they currently have, meaning they're just expanding. Um, I forget what Southern Middlesex was doing, but there's another regional vocational school committee, the Upper Cape. Which, uh, one of the members actually pointed out in the meeting, she said, this is concerning, because. This is for people now, what's it gonna be next year and the year after, so I think they see. It coming down the pipeline, that all these vocational school districts are turning fifty.
Right. Unlike Shrewsbury, they're building a, be a two thousand and two in their mind.
Wendy, it's not related to Whittier, but, uh, I, I saw that what she sent, what she forwarded today from Justin, in terms of the invitation to meet, so. Maybe just, I, I don't know, uh.
I don't know anything about it.
I don't know anything about it either.
Emailed from Allison, um. Tadashi, uh, asking for the chairs of the three select boards to meet with Justin to talk about Kentucky budget issues in early January.
I thought we were gonna get some at the last meeting, that was like, so, what happened?
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I'll keep you posted, hopefully it'll be before our next meeting, so I can update you. What?
I, I thought we were getting at the last meeting, was I the only one? I mean, no. I thought there was gonna be five of them, instead we get this song and dance routine that I didn't appreciate. I know it's on video, I don't care. No, it was, it was. Isn't kinda late to, should, they already know, I mean, we should have had some.
Is it usually in February that we get the big budget presentation?
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, they don't, they don't know the local impact until they get the state budget, but they, they, in terms of forecasting costs. They can do that, they just don't know what the state revenues are being there for what.
A little prime in the pump.
Yeah.
You can feel.
I, I, I definitely expected at that regional meeting, I, you know, I thought what they shared was, was, was great. I was sorry that was all they shared, because it didn't get into any of what I think a lot of us, especially the income numbers and, and, you know, so, you know. Expected more of like. A, a forecast of what, what they see as, uh, both cost drivers and revenue trends, and I, I very much thought that was. What we were gonna hear.
Yeah.
And it wasn't, that wasn't even part of the touch, touched on.
Mm hmm. Alright, what about Board of Health and their request for us to come to their meeting? Any thoughts on that?
It'd be fine as long as they're scheduled the same day as ours in this, in this round.
I don't think that's an option, we're supposed to record on January seventh.
My question is, how come they, the whole time, they could have come and give us a presentation on this thing, or facilitated it.
Right.
And instead we had to make our decisions based on. Little information we had, now it's.
Well, I mean, did you look at the presentation that provided? I don't see anything in there about specific. Benefits or harm to West Newbury by not participating, it's all a bunch of.
Yes, we're losing millions of dollars and we're gonna be voted out.
Right, right.
I don't get it either, but. Does either the Board of Health or Paul, does anybody? Understand what it really is?
I don't think so, I think they're responding to, uh, well, Rick, do you wanna report on your?
There was, uh. I thought of it as kind of a song and dance routine.
Mm hmm.
Um, by, um. Well, what was his name?
My Q.
Yeah, my Q, though. Um. And, um, so, you know, my personal opinion is that, um. He's. Trying to sell something, he's trying really hard to sell something, and, and, uh. There were, you know, sort of statements and claims that, to me, didn't always. Seem to ring a hundred percent true, just based on, you know, common knowledge.
Mm hmm.
Uh, that was my perspective of what he said, so. His claim is that the Board of Health will now be responsible for things that they currently are not. And that it will require training and support. And that the only way to do that is to sign on to this collaborative and, and, uh, you know, get our share of the, you know. Gajillion dollars that are available.
Did he say what there would be?
Um, he, I, I'll, I'll tell you, I don't recall.
Oh, okay.
I mean, there, he, he made, there were a lot of generalities.
That's, that's my point, I guess.
Yeah, there were a lot of generalities, but, but. There weren't specifics and, and there was a lot, there was, there were a lot of words. Um, and, and. But not a lot of specific content, I didn't feel.
Okay.
Uh, so I, I just, I would, I would personally do a lot better with something and write it, um, rather than somebody, you know, could.
But even the slides we got.
Yeah, it's specific to West Newbury, I mean, that's what I'm hearing, is, is which of these new standards.
Well, we're probably trying to fix it, we need a solution for that. Somebody got funding on, that's what I don't.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, what do you think about just responding to the Board of Health and saying that we haven't seen anything that changes our mind, but if you would like to come to our meeting, we're happy to. Listen to what you have to say, is that appropriate?
Yeah, I think that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, it, it should definitely, you know, say. How, how are these new mandates gonna apply to West Newbury specifically, and?
What new training is needed?
Yeah, and, and, has there been review of whether, let's say there are some, and I don't know if there are or aren't, uh. Are those, do those exceed the? Capacity and the capability of our personnel, you know, we have. Sixty-four hours of, uh, staff a week in that department, and, uh, very capable, very competent, so, uh.
And we have the, the nurse as well, right? There's a certain amount of hours.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's four hours a week, isn't it?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, based on. Number of, uh. Uh, basically communicable diseases, I, there's a, the, the invoice varies. In terms of the amount, and there's always an index of the number of.
Based on number of communicable diseases?
Is, is the tracking that they do? Yeah, I can show you some of the invoices, if you might be interested. And how that all works.
Okay.
Alright. Um, first, finally, the MBTA fiscal impact study, any comments on that? I think it was pretty interesting.
I don't believe it.
You don't believe it?
No.
Why?
Eighty-seven units, and you may have ten kids in there. Public school aged children in the project, ten.
Isn't that for the thirty, forty, thirty-five, forty?
Nope, that could be five kids. No, I don't know. And they have a number of fifteen, six, I know they explain it later on, Justin said nineteen, nineteen thousand educated kids, that's taken out the state funding. I don't know. You know, also seven hundred, it, it's a problem in MBTA housing. They, when, when they do the ten percent of the affordable, they average out the cost, they do the math in the back, these units are gonna be almost eight hundred thousand a piece. So you're not fixing a problem again, you're, you're doing density, but you're not accommodating. Uh, people who you're trying to keep in the community with affordable housing, so I, it's, uh.
But that's not the purpose of this, it's not.
But that's the illusion of this, that's what everyone.
Well, that's a misconception that I think we have to try to correct.
Right.
It's about having choice, not.
But again, if I. It is. I don't even, how much I would bet you that there'll be, uh, if you did an eighty-seven unit, one to ten kids, unless if somebody's thirty-eight, I'm pretty sure there's gonna be more than five kids in there. I mean, that doesn't even seem plausible at any level.
Angus, do you have any insight as to where that, are those standard?
Talks about, yeah. Yeah, there's, yeah, he cites the sources, it's, this is always gonna be the most controversial thing, just people just don't believe.
Yeah.
What they say, so that's part of why I wanted to get the, uh, presentations, because I think. You know, the, the, uh, they can represent their work much more effectively than I can, it's, uh, but I can tell you from twenty-five years of this. No one ever believes the numbers. Uh, you know, we did provide them for, uh, uh, developments, including Fallsby and Drake's Landing, we, we got from the school department exactly the number of students, uh, and provided that data. Based on the number of units in those developments. Uh, but, you know, I think he's relying heavily on a, a study, which I do believe is, is. Kind of definitive study on this in Massachusetts, uh, that, uh, multifamily housing has a much lower, uh. You know, number of school-aged children per unit than single family. I think, you know, where I, I would probably, uh, you know, really wanna. Press on that is, is this, is what would actually be developed truly multifamily housing? Or is it something that's really townhouse type? Uh, housing that is, you know, may, maybe more likely to have a demographic that's similar to a single family? So he's running numbers based on a multifamily, maybe envisioning. You know. The stacked flats or apartment building, but I don't think that's real, I, I doubt that's what. Would be built under the zoning, I think what would be built is probably not dissimilar from some of the more recent developments, Drake's Landing or, or Fallsby or.
What's the one across from Fuhrman Gold?
Uh, Fallsby.
So that one originally was going to be smaller homes for retirees and things like that, that was the perception that they created. And then they started increasing the, the footprints, and they wanted to go with two-car garages and all this, because they're realizing they were selling to. Families.
Mm hmm.
It evolved very quickly, and.
Yeah.
I don't fault them for doing that, but just. In West Newbury's gonna be very different, and the, the prices are gonna start at like five and a quarter. And I went down to the first open house, and they're already at like sixty-eighty, and this is, it's like, wait a minute, so, you know. I, I. You know, I would say, if, if, if anybody believes those numbers, that you ought to put a punitive clause in, if for each kid over, you're gonna pay us twenty thousand dollars a year in the division, right? That number will change real quick, they'll modify it when they think about it a little more. Because there's no way with thirty-eight units, you're gonna have five school-aged kids.
Well, how many, do, do you know how many we have in the Drake's Landing and?
Uh, not off the top of my head, but I, we sent that data, so I, I do, I do, uh.
So that's reality check.
Set now, but, uh.
And that, that's huge, you have to real quick, if you even just double that, I would assume it's gonna be. Thirty units, I can get it. I would have said thirty kids minimum. So that, then your numbers all go, it's, it's gonna be in that loss.
Why do you think there'll be so many kids?
Right.
I mean, these are small, smaller homes, right?
And, and the, the, the distribution, you know, is mostly one and two-bedroom with very, based on their projections, very. Small proportion of three-bedrooms, you know, so it's like four percent three-bedroom, this, they're looking at. The, this distribution of, of number of bedrooms and multifamily units, West Newbury market area, I don't know what, what our market area, what other communities are involved in that. But it's, it looks like it's, uh, you know, about thirty-eight percent are, are a single bedroom. Well, okay, so starting out with studios at like seven, eighteen percent. Uh, thirty-eight percent for, um, one-bedroom, thirty-nine percent for two-bedroom. Uh, four percent for three-bedroom, and looks like one percent for four-bedroom, so. You know, in a two-bedroom, in a one-bedroom, you're not gonna have kids. And a two-bedroom. You might have a kid.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I do, I did find the, the data we had sent them, uh. It's, uh. Thirteen. School-aged kids in, from pre-K to, uh, to, to twelve, uh, in, uh, Drake's Landing and three.
How many kids?
Thirteen.
Uh, how many units?
Uh, I, that's in a separate email.
I think you were gonna ask. So possibly.
Uh, and, and Fallsby is three.
So it's like forty-eight units or something like that in?
Yeah, I think Drake's, I was gonna say thirty-eight, but I, I did add that, okay, oh. Okay, so, it's, I don't think it's more than. I, it's in the thirties, so.
Okay, okay.
Well, Falls would be three kids?
Mm hmm. Yeah, that's, that's the.
Thought it said more standing at the bus stop then, maybe they're important.
Well, I saw it in this court, uh, you know, they.
Oh, yeah.
They were all. Yeah. So it's just in that development, uh.
That's still surprising, that's interesting.
Alright.
Again. It's gonna be what it's gonna be, it doesn't matter.
So will they come and present this?
Well, that's, that was what I want to talk about, because I, you know, we have inferred two presentations, uh, both, you know, virtual.
Mm hmm.
Uh, my, my thought would be to have them in sometime in January or February before the public hearing.
Mm hmm.
Then have them again, again. In a public hearing, but that would allow an opportunity for either the select board or planning board, if you had a joint meeting. To ask those kinds of questions, uh, you know, you may still have the same questions when we get to a public hearing, but I think it'd be good to. Give them an opportunity to present their, you know, their assumptions and their data and their methodology, and that way, if it is gonna be. Undermined in a public hearing, I would, I would want that to happen after they've had some opportunity to defend it and not have it become a beating frenzy.
Right.
Uh, but, you know, we, we do, I, I've been telling you for a long time. People will not believe this night, and that's.
So.
We're gonna hear when, when we get to public hearing.
You just heard it for me too, though. But I don't think it's that significant, it's, like, it doesn't carry a lot of weight, this, the financial component anyways, to me, so.
Well, it does to a lot of people.
I know.
That's what they say.
Same with the traffic study, that's not gonna be wavy.
Yeah. So should we see if we can do a, a joint meeting for that, so that we can both have input, or?
I think that'd be smart, yeah.
If, okay, do you think we could wait until the traffic study is available and? Or do you think it won't be much discussion between the board and us, we still have the traffic study?
I'm not sure, I'll, I'll look at the schedule and, uh, see, you know, logistically see, see if, uh. I think by the, so the traffic study will have dropped by the end of January, and that was. We need it for the seventh, I believe it was for Friday the seventh, for the boards meeting, this, the planning board meeting the following Tuesday, then the eleventh of February.
Mm hmm.
Uh. Which, uh. I think, and I think we're aiming for an early March public hearing, I think that would be, that would be fine, I would just want it, you know, far enough ahead of the public hearing that it's.
Fair.
Then if there is, you know, let's say you do have questions, and they do say, oh, you know, we, we didn't account for that, or whatever.
Mm hmm.
Uh, it'd be good to get that known, be, you know, far enough ahead of the public hearing.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I doubt that will happen, but you never know, and, and this question I just raised with you all, you know. I, I haven't, we haven't talked to them since we got the study, so we haven't had a, you know, a meeting to. Review their findings or anything, but I, I will ask that question as to. You know, when they're using assumptions on school-aged children or otherwise for multifamily housing. Are they, you know, contemplating the, the form of housing that I think is probably more likely in this community, which is like a, a Drake's Landing type development? I do have a kind of MBTA communities, uh, kind of more late-breaking thing, which I think arises from, from the meeting, the joint meeting we had recently with the planning board. Uh. I think it would be very. Valuable to the process to have a, uh. Reasonable estimate of the development potential under the underlying zoning for both locations. Uh, so the build-out, or the, uh, yield, yield plan that was talked about.
Yeah.
So I did, uh, ask, uh, uh, Jen Geary put together, at my request, the. Uh, engineers who had, were, were the kind of engineers of record for the three, um, uh. OSPDs that have been built, and, uh, I was intending to reach out to one of them and say. You know, can you get me a proposal to do a yield plan, both for conventional subdivision, as well as what you think an OSPD could yield?
Mm hmm.
Uh, so as long as you all think that's a good line of inquiry.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I doubt it would cost that much, uh, to just do that, uh. But I, I'd like to invite a proposal, and, uh, if it's something that's within the available funding, I do think that would be really helpful. Because I think people are thinking of the MBTA communities compared to the current condition.
Right.
As we talked about, it's not gonna be the current, especially with the, uh, you know, with, with the nap property. They were, people really need to be thinking about it as MBTA versus what might happen otherwise, so. And we can speculate all day as to what that particular developer is, is gonna do. But when you consider that. A subdivision. Over three units of war is already a special. I don't think he's gonna shy away from doing a special permit, I, I would be shocked if the plan was not an OSPD in that location, I'd be shocked if the plan was for a single family home.
Mm hmm.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I'd be shocked.
Well, he even made the comment, he's still under a similar development, and he's.
Exactly.
Put in the homes.
Exactly, so.
Yeah, he mentioned the, the problems with the, I saw them a couple of weeks ago. Why those homes weren't gonna work, his three or four homes just didn't work.
Cause there was a newspaper article probably four years ago, at this, it was several years ago, you know, talking about four homes.
And everybody made commitments, and then nobody followed through, so that was the problem. Yeah, everybody made commitments, and then nobody followed through, so that was the problem.
Okay, yeah, so I think that would be really worthwhile, and I feel like, uh, since, you know, the engineers who did the plans for some of these other developments already would be familiar with the bylaw, they wouldn't have to learn our bylaw, they also would have gone through the actual permitting process and know our planning board, which is, you know, substantially similar, you know, as, as for instance, when Drake's was done, so.
So would you have them do it for both sides?
Yeah, for both sides, yeah.
Right?
Well, we'll see, if they come in with some, you know, eye-popping number, you know, you know, I'll keep you briefed on that, see what.
I think the schedule will be more the determining factor than the cost at this point.
Yeah, I, I feel like to do a yield plan, you know, they're not engineering the project, they're doing the lotting plan, and, and, you know, obviously taking into account total and wetlands from what will be available from G I S, they're not, you know, they're not gonna be out surveying the land, it's gonna be a, you know, an estimate, but, but I think for people who know what they're doing, they could probably do that without a, without a big lift, I think it'd be very, very worthwhile.
Yeah, I do too.
What do we have to font?
So the appropriation, I believe, was seventy-five thousand.
I guess, you got plenty of money.
Yeah, there's plenty, there's plenty, yeah, I mean, they, so I think what's under contract, uh, now, which fiscal is just over thirty, so.
Cause we were anticipating the whole forty R thing, I mean.
The amount was set in the event that we went forty R, doing the whole forty R application and all of that.
All right, um, what's the next item? Oh, the correspondence to Courtland Lane, Rick, you had referred to this earlier, after I received everybody's comments, I ended up changing it, and I cut out the piece about, we don't plan to enforce our boundaries at this time, so, um, just wanted to make you aware of that, because you probably didn't see the final version.
Yeah.
I just felt like it wasn't really appropriate to send all the pertinent residents, I would rather follow up with these two people specifically.
Yeah, cause that's not a day where they should, those are those.
Even though they're claiming to be enabled.
Correct, right, right.
Yeah.
And that, well, I commented back on when Angus.
I know, that's why I.
I sort of think that we should be enforcing it, so.
So this just allows us to make a decision as a board, rather than.
I thought it looked a great letter, and maybe you might as well.
So, so I, I, yeah, started to.
Oh, it's on the S R right now, yeah.
I, I, I started to, um, add some notes to the letter, and I guess I got dragged off and never sent it, but, um, you know, one of my thoughts was that I, I understand where Chris is coming from, where, you know, we should clean this up, and, um, you know, quite honestly, if, you know, there's this, um, this, you know, tacit threat of, of them trying to sue the town on, on it, and, and if it ever, if, if we ever end up in legal action, because they've decided that they need to sue the town to try to prevent the town from using its right-of-way. Um, at that point, if we're already in, in, you know, involved in legal action, that's the time that we just we'll tell, tell, tell them, you gotta move this up, because, okay, cause we know you're gonna argue with that, you're gonna probably try to sue us for that, sue the town for that, so let's just get it all over with at, at once.
Well, he already has that in his letter.
Yeah.
You know, let's do it the legal, we're trying to save a very legal.
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly, that's what I said, it's a, it's a tacit threat.
I'm, 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 it's pretty direct, to be honest.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and this is being recorded, I'm getting really tired of residents randomly deciding to sue the town when they have no basis, and we spend all this legal funds, just so residents know, on these illogical lawsuits that we eventually get tossed out of the courts, but it's still costing town time, significant funds.
You know, tens of thousands of dollars.
Most of it's in executive session, and you residents don't ever see this, so.
Right.
And it takes up a lot of town's time, too.
Right.
So knock it off.
So I, I do think we should revisit this in January and decide what we want to move forward, and at least engage them, so we have a conversation.
Legitimately, if I look at things from my perspective, if that was my house, and I knew that was encroaching, I would do it conveniently and logically and tell the town just what I'm gonna do, to move it, because if some, some reason he gets transferred, has to sell his house and move, he's got a big problem.
Right.
It's gonna be moved at some point in some time, like maybe not even my lifetime, but just deal with it.
Yeah. Right.
Taking my soapbox and going home.
Not yet. All right, any comments on the Board of Water Commissioners's letter? We go. Or any discussion? I think it's our moment of point, not worth. All right, Ron. I move to recess into executive session, MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, eight-two, three, and six, as noted on the agenda.
Sorry.
And to come back into open session?
Does that have to be part of the?
We'll, we'll recover back in open session.
To then vote the way.
To, to.
Yeah.
On favor?
I'll, I.
So the, uh, board recessed from executive session to resume in an open session.
I will make a motion to approve the increased wage schedule for the following positions, the Highway Superintendent, the Council on Aging Director, the DPW Business Manager, the Executive Assistant Position, and the Council on Aging Nutrition Coordinator.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have to adjourn?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.